Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Tom Jones is here from the City Rescue Mission. He'll lead us in our invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Gary Mars if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning, Lord, just asking your guidance and direction, Lord, for this gathering today. Lord, I know that there's a tremendous amount of progress being made in our community, and we just thank you for that. But, Lord, I pray that you would give strength and wisdom and courage, Lord, to these leaders and those that are present here today, God, that the business that needs to be taken care of today will be done so according to your will and your plan. Lord, bless this time, and we'll give you the praise for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are pleased this morning to have two students from Oklahoma City University who are going to be performing this weekend in an opera that has not been performed in Oklahoma in quite some time, if ever. And let me introduce to you Caitlin Stobey and Liam Bernhardt. You all want to come forward? Now, I assume you all don't need a microphone. That's typically the case, but let me at least turn this microphone a little bit for the television audience. And if you'll tell us a little bit about it and then give us a taste of what we can hear on the OCU campus this weekend.
As the mayor said, we are both performance students at Oklahoma City University. We are performing Gertrude Stein and Virgil Thompson's The Mother of Us All, which is a story about Susan B. Anthony, and it's a tale of some of her life attributes nearing the end of her life. And it is a story specifically about women's suffrage.
This short excerpt that we are going to be performing is of John Quincy Adams, our sixth president, and Constance Fletcher, a woman of 1910. And if you know anything about history, those two time periods are not together. So this opera has a lot of mixing characters of different time periods and seeing how they would interact and what lost intention would ensue. A subplot of Susan B. Anthony's fight for women's suffrage is John Adams courting Constance Fletcher, and this is a short little duet. Hope you enjoy that.
In this Constance Fletcher, it is a great pleasure that I kneel at your feet. But I am an Adams. I kneel at your feet, none, not anyone. Dear Miss Constance Fletcher, dear, dear Miss Constance Fletcher, I kneel at your feet. If I had not been an Adams, I would have kneeled at your feet.
May I kiss my hand?
And kiss your hand.
What a pity! No, not what a pity! It is but a sore, but what a pity, what a pity it is, what a pity!
Do not pity me. Kind, beautiful, loving Miss Constance Fletcher, do not pity me. Nor do not pity me. I am an Adams and not pitiable.
Oh, dear, dear me! If he had not been Adams, have kneeled at my feet, and he would have kissed my hand! Do you mean that you have kissed my hand? Or my hands? Dear Mr. Adams!
I mean that I would have first kneeled at your feet, and then I would have kissed one of your hands. And then I would still kneeling have kissed one of your hands. If I had not been Adams!
Dear Mr. Adams, dear me! If he had not been an Adams, he would have kneeled at my feet, and he would have kissed one of my hands, and then still kneeling, he would have kissed both of my hands, still kneeling if he had not been an Adams!
Wonderful. Thank you all so much. Caitlin is from Katy, Texas, which is a suburb of Houston, and Liam is from Traverse City, Michigan. We're pleased to have you both down here today. I'm going to hand you the microphone and let you let people know how they can get tickets for this OCU event coming up this weekend.
Mother of Us All opens this weekend, March 9th, 10th, and 11th. Showtimes are 8:00 PM Friday and Saturday and 3:00 PM on Sunday. To purchase tickets, you can go online to www.OKCU.edu/ticketoffice.
Or you can order directly from our box office at phone number 208-5227.
Hope to see you there.
You sing beautifully. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thank you all very much. This is also a special day because we're going to join the Oklahoma City South Kiwanis Club in honoring one of our city employees. We have over 4,000 employees, so when one of them is chosen as the employee of the month, you can imagine what type of an honor this is. And let me ask Robert Moore to come forward. Robert works in the Water Utilities Office. Robert, come forward. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Robert Moore has been a city employee for 13 years and is a field operations supervisor in the Water Quality Division of the Utilities Department. Whereas Robert Moore responds to customer concerns about the taste and color of water and supervises crews who obtain water samples and flush water mains. Robert Moore follows up on service issues with his crews and always calls customers back to ensure their concerns have been satisfactorily addressed. Whereas Robert Moore improved the SAP, the Systems Applications and Products Program for Water Quality's Water System Quality Section by making it more user-friendly. He works closely with his employees using a no-pressure approach to help them through the SAP training and trained his crew to assist the overhaul or maintenance employees with data entry. Whereas Robert Moore sets an exemplary standard for leadership and service and has earned the respect of his employees and coworkers for his attention to detail and upholding city standards and policies. Robert Moore is a hardworking, dedicated, motivated, and productive employee who brings a contagious positive attitude to the workplace. He is involved with the Oklahoma City Employees Association, participates in the Heart of the City campaign, and volunteers on our Day of Caring. Whereas this council desires to recognize Robert Moore for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Robert Moore, March 2012, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
And, Robert, now we need a motion and a second, and we'll vote on this resolution. How about it? All right, cast your votes. Congratulations, you're now the employee of the month. Thanks very much. And, you know, we, one of the things that, you know, our citizens in Oklahoma City have done for years is take for granted the high quality of water we had. It wins national taste tests, but when you look at the quantity of water and the quality of water, we're tough to match, and it's people like Robert and his coworkers out there that make all that possible. So once again, let's show our appreciation to him and his staff. Thank you very much. We're now on item four of the council agenda. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. I'll look for a motion for item 4A, which is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for February 28th, and item 4B to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for February 21st. All right, comments or questions on the Journal? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I have several this morning. Starting on page nine, under Items for Individual Consideration. Eight, C, S.P.U.D. 639, the applicant requests a referral to March 27th. The applicant is ill. Councilman Kelly and the president of the Neighborhood Association have been informed and agree to this request. On page 10, under Unsecured Items, under item eight, G1, item C, 4720, Tinker Road, whereas if that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item D, 1416, Northwest 8th Street, whereas if that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item E, 806, Southeast 11th Street, whereas if that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item I, 2108, Northeast 28th Street, whereas if that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item L, 1631, Northeast 50th Street, whereas if that be stricken, the owner has secured. And under Claims for Denial on page 11, under item eight, L1E, the claim of Rubinitz, the municipal council's office, if that be deferred one week from today until March 13th.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, or recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where there are five items. Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, Dennis?
Mayor, when you talk about uncontested continuances on item 8B, it's listed at the front of your council docket, but I wanted to make sure that that item was continued. I didn't hear it.
We generally don't list the ones that are already listed on the docket that way, Dennis, but yes, that is listed and will be deferred until March 27th.
You learn something new every day. Thank you. All right, motion and a sec on the MFA. Ready to vote? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well, adjourned as the OC MFA convenes as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items. All right, comments or questions on the EAT? Yeah, Pat?
What is our philosophy or our policy on which streets we select as clean?
We generally have routes that we follow. Mr. Ryan, they're not in residential areas. They're in the downtown area. Well, DOT, DOTC does most of the downtown area, but there are selected routes, archerials. We've got specific routes we follow, and then we're, it's available to do any special requests that need to be done if there's a problem there.
Not at this time, but when the construction is completed at the Hefner Water Treatment Plant, if the contractor doesn't clean up the streets, there needs to be some work done out there. There's a lot of mud built up, and the striping at that particular location's been worn off by all the construction traffic, so we need to do some work on that.
That's a different instance. That one, that's a contractor responsible to keep that clean, but we'll make sure that happens, and we'll make sure that becomes, that gets re-scribed also.
I wasn't sure I understood the numbers on here. Seems like we're getting a lot more curb miles for less money. Is that the case?
Marcia?
Yes, yes, it is.
So we were able to negotiate something, yeah?
Exciting.
And we've got about 3,000 curb miles extra. Where would those curb miles be? Would they be in the downtown area as well, or could we spread out a little bit and get some of the outlying areas accumulate a lot of trash?
Much of it's in the downtown area. There are some new streets again that have developed more fully into very active commercial areas that are being added. I have a map. I'll get you a copy of the detailed map.
I appreciate that, Your Honor. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Any more comments or questions on the EAT? We have a motion and a second, so cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Or adjourn the OC EAT, reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
That's better, yeah. Your Honor.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any individual consideration on any of the items listed under the consent docket?
Mayor, if I could, I just have two things I'd like to mention, 6R and 6T.
And, Your Honor, I have a question on 6E, as it echoed.
Meg, you want to go ahead with R and T?
If I could, thank you very much, Mayor. I just wanted to mention R, which recognizes the early completion incentive of the Skydance Bridge. So our contractor was really under the gun to get the work done timely for ODOT's purposes and was able to recognize a $400,000.
Let me elaborate that, if you would. As we got into the time schedule, ODOT, as you know, the interstate opened in January, so they were pushing the time schedule in on us, and they gave us a very small window of opportunity to get the Skydance Bridge. And they suggested that we add a bonus to it, and we said we didn't have the budget for a bonus, and they said, "We'll give you the money for the bonus." And so a bonus was put into the contract documents, the contractor earned it, but ODOT is paying for that, so they're paying us to pay that bonus provision on that. And so that's how that came about.
Thank you very much. I was really glad to see that. And item 6R, I'm sorry, I already did 6R. Item 6T, you know, we've talked a lot around the horseshoe about how we're going to afford to get the work done on EK Gaylord for the hub, and I just wanted to recognize the staff for making a grant application to the Federal Transportation, Federal Highway Administration for two and a half million dollars for that purpose.
Right, and again, we do have money in the Streetscape Package 7 of Project 20 to do this hub. This is a grant request to get some additional money to help in that. And then in the next week or two, we'll also be seeing coming forth through this body a grant request for Tiger IV, which has been reformatted a little bit to, I think, make it a more desirable grant application as that goes in. So we're trying to hit this with a lot of different avenues.
Great, thank you, Jim.
Mayor, it's a little bit off that subject, but it has to do with the hub itself. It's my understanding that there are some redevelopment projects, at least kind of on the drawing board in the Bricktown area, that might interfere with the overall plan for the hub.
I've been shared with some of those emails recently, too, Mr. White. I don't believe that to be true. I believe that the Compress Lot was the one that was referred to. I'm unaware of any plans in that area, and I'm pretty sure the city has a first right of refusal on that.
Okay, well, the one that, the one that was most concerning was the one where the U-Haul storage site was.
Well, that's the area, and actually, that's called the Compress Lot. That's what I'm referring on.
Okay, okay. Can you, well, you can just let me know privately, but I'd like to know that's not a problem, because if it is a problem, it's a big problem.
We don't know of any plans or that it is a problem. I've got the email, and I did some research on it, and I don't, I don't know of anything that's out there. And again, I believe we have first right of refusal on that property.
And that, that's for Phase 3 of the hub? That's where we're putting the parking garage and that?
That's correct, but we're still trying to maintain that, Miss.
Okay.
Pat, item E?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a question. We're buying copier here for the Public Works Department, which is fine, but it seems like we buy copiers from a number of different suppliers. And would there be any advantage if we standardized with one supplier and bought all our copiers, give them the bulk of the business, and get some kind of a price benefit from it? I know we might have to settle for 90% solution sometimes, but it may be worthwhile.
I don't know. Amy Simpson is here. Or Greg Freeman, one of the two of us, of them?
You know, it's, we bid those, there's a lot of different types of copiers that are needed because of needing color copies or needing different types. This one particularly specialized and actually wasn't on contract because it's so specialized of the need that's there. So we do buy so many different copiers and different types of needs. I mean, we can certainly look at that to see if there's some benefit to trying to do more standardization on that, but right now, there are just so many different needs with the technologies that are available with the different types of copiers and how we use them, that we have several, we have several copiers or copier vendors on contract right now.
Okay, but I think it might be worthwhile to explore, at least, if there's any value to selecting one contractor to supply or...
We can look into that a little bit further to see if there's more advantage. I do think the type of technologies available has restricted us in that in the past. We can look into that and see if there's some advantage there.
There's a tendency for departments or something very specific to answer a lot of needs that aren't full-time needs, that might be met by some contract copier for special occasions when we do need a facility or a resource we don't have.
And with this one even, even as specialized as it was, we did check with all of our contract vendors first to make sure that it wasn't available with our contract vendors.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Nothing on the concurrents docket today, so we move on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases, and the first is in Ward 4. The address is 2326 Southeast 59th Street. It's currently R1, single-family residential, and it would become an R2, medium-low-density residential district. Pete?
Excuse me? Move approval.
All right, comments or questions on 8A1? Then cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is also in Ward 4. The address is 5100 South I-35 Service Road. It's a planned unit development and would become a simplified planned unit development. Pete?
Are there any here, are any persons here to speak in opposition to this? David, would you come forward and just give us a little brief overview of what you're doing? The bank there on Interstate 35 has become a very prominent structure along Interstate 35, and I understand their, this is an expansion to that. If you could just give us a little...
Sure. Good morning. David Box, 522, called Board Drive. The reason we're having to come in with a rezoning application, current PUD in place has a height restriction. The bank is expanding, and if you're familiar with it, it's all rock, really well-done. This will match the existing building in style, appearance, materials. It's just we needed a taller building. So this will allow 80 feet. It will be connected to the original building, and we matched the zoning of the original PUD except for we prohibited signs in this spot. So there was no protest at Planning Commission, and we're here to answer any questions.
Is architecturally very impressive, nice structure there along the interstate, so if there are any other comments, I'd move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a sec. Any comments or questions in on 8A2? Then cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 12000 North MacArthur Boulevard. It's a planned unit development and would become a simplified planned unit development. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a project that told us to build a senior citizen center, assisted living, nursing home facility, sort of all the typical things senior citizens require. It's in an area that is a busy area now. It'll be a good buffer between MacArthur and the residential areas, the east of there. I think it's worthy of approval. I would move it be approved. Incidentally, it was approved unanimously at the Planning Commission.
All right, we have a motion and a sec. Any comments or questions on item 8A3? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Before the slide goes down, I'd like to suggest that we keep in mind the fact that there's a new library being built to the north and east of there, and maybe that we can, in the future, consider sidewalk connection between that center and the library. I think it would be very helpful. And I don't know if we can get through there without building a sidewalk along MacArthur and 122nd Street. This will require a sidewalk, at least in front of the senior citizens' buildings operations, and so we'd have to extend the sidewalk from the north side of the property up to 122nd, then across 122nd to the library.
What are they going to build here?
A senior citizen, it's going to have a nursing home facility. It'll be all three levels of senior citizen care at that.
Okay. All right. We're on to item 8B, which has been deferred until March 27th. Item 8C has also been deferred until March 27th.
Mayor, in light of the deferral, I would also, for a lot of the residents that were involved in this 8C, which is an application by SBA Communications to rezone North Lottie for a cell phone tower, I don't know if a lot of the citizens were aware of the fact that we got notice late yesterday, or sometime yesterday afternoon, that the applicant wanted a deferral of this matter, and so it's, my understanding that it's going to be deferred to March 27th. Is that correct? But I would ask staff that in this report, and I don't want to get into all the details, but it states that the applicant has met with the, with the Neighborhood Association to discuss an alternative site location. Has this been since the Planning Commission, or do you know?
I'm not, I'm not aware of an additional meetings between Planning Commission and Council, but I'll check and verify that.
I really would like to know, because the residents that I've been receiving information from, it doesn't sound like that they've had a meeting with the applicants since the initial discussions of this, which was almost a year ago.
Well, I know that he's been in contact with the president of the association, and they did look at some alternatives before Planning Commission, but I don't know that there was anything after Planning Commission.
Mr. Kelly, I'm Roger. Roger Allen, live in the neighborhood. I'm vice president of the association. There has been no additional meetings with SBA. Mr. LaFortune?
Okay.
And we tried to get, we have 75 people that were supposed to be here this morning. It was a big, huge momentum that we were building, and this deferral is a big blow to our community because of the elders and the seniors that we had transporting up here. So I just wanted to state that, and I came up here this morning thinking it was not going to be talked about to the ones that we weren't able to contact to meet them at the front door and say, "I'm so sorry. Please come back again for us."
Roger, I apologize, you know, in light of the process. I know we had requested a deferral on behalf of the residents initially, and so we're going to be, we're... residents initially, and so we're going to be, we're respectful of their request for a deferral. I believe the applicant is ill. But I will definitely be back with the Neighborhood Association to give you whatever updated information that I can find. But it just, I was just kind of taken by this statement in the report where it stated that the applicant had met with the Neighborhood Association to discuss an alternative location. So we will talk further in reference to it. And I apologize for the last-minute notice, but we will try to be timely in reference to letting everyone know if there's going to be another continuance, you know, so you all won't have to be down here. All right, thank you.
Kenny, can I ask you? It sounds like we're going to have two very contested cell phone tower applications on March 27th and Ward Two and Ward Seven, so we need to have a court reporter here for that?
Yes, and we actually had arranged to have a court reporter here today, but released thereafter it was going to be deferred. But yeah, we will have a court reporter.
All right, we're on to item 8D. This is a public hearing regarding our reexamination and ordinance that's been suggested to change our ticket scalping rules. We have a series of people that have signed up. I'll be calling their names in just a moment. Just, my, it's a three-step process. The item was introduced last week. We won't be voting on a final decision today, but we are ingesting public comment, so we're appreciative of everyone that came down. Because we have a series of people, I'll try to ask you to hold your comments to three minutes or less, and I'll call them in the order they've been handed to me. Mike Chandler?
I'd like to refer to the...
All right. Ronald Turner?
Roger.
Yeah, sure. Come on up, Ron.
Good morning. All I want to say about the new amendment is basically, I feel that in every state, a driver's license is a privilege, not a right. And I feel that to own a Thunder ticket is not a privilege, because what privilege is because of law, laws, rules, and regulations. I'm very nervous. And regulations. And it seems like this amendment, the regulations, like where you can sell a ticket at, how much you can sell a ticket for, and that part, I don't like that at all. But the part that really doesn't agree with me is the internet part. You're in the privacy of your own home. And law says, I think it's gone really too far. And Norman, as soon as played there, for how many years? There's no law there. And people, I mean, and it works. It works every, like, six, seven times a year, it works. And when people are outside buying, selling, trading tickets, I don't think that's a nuisance. I think it's like capitalism at its best. I don't feel like it's like you're a nuisance because you're trading, buying, selling tickets, and that game's going on. Sometimes you can have up to 100,000 people, and a little normal, and it works. I don't see why it cannot work at Oklahoma City. I don't see why it could, no reason possible. Like, for example, I would like to see a Super Bowl. That's not going to happen for me, because I have a $500 cap. I'm not spending more than $500 for it. It costs about $2,000 or $3,000 to see a Super Bowl. Now, that's me. I don't feel it's worth it. I'm not going to spend more than $500. But I don't think, I wouldn't want to see a local, state, or federal government come in and make it possible for me to see a Super Bowl, when it's about half a million people are willing to pay more. I'm not willing to do this. I don't think as soon as they're being duped, they know the price value of a ticket is. It's all about the person who wants to see this more than the next one. They want to see it more. Me personally, I'm not going to spend more than $500. My birthday is something, but I'm not going to spend $500 to see a Super Bowl. I don't think any government should come in and rest me around so you can see the Super Bowl. That's pretty much what I think.
I appreciate it, Ron. Thanks for coming down. Michael Fletcher?
I appreciate the opportunity to address.
Yeah, we will need your name and address for the record.
Sure. Mike Fletcher, 203 North Riverside Drive. And I think the issue with the ordinance as it's written is, you know, it said that it's trying to protect the people, and I understand that, you know, the Chesapeake Arena has issues with people being badgered by on-site ticket sellers on the street. But by pushing it away from the arena, I think you're actually doing more damage to the public than helping them, because now if someone buys a ticket that's fraudulent, they've got to travel that much further when they get to the door, find out their ticket is invalid, go back. Where's that person that sold them the ticket? You know, I think the real answer to this comes in, you can look at other municipalities that have gone into licensing. There's also other options, but, you know, if you had a, where everyone who's a street peddler, a ticket peddler's license, they're vetted, background checked, et cetera. And then you do make it a crime if you sell without that. But if you have that, now someone also has a feeling of safety, knowing that this person has been vetted and looked into, and they do do business in the proper manner. You know, kind of like Ron said, I mean, it works at OU. I mean, OU, they don't even need, you know, normally you don't even need a license, but it works. It's open market. It's the greatest, one of the greatest principles our country's on is capitalism and free-market economy. And I just don't see why, you know, ticket sales should be restricted. I mean, I know, you know, 10 years ago, when I started selling tickets, you know, it was, I believe, legal in 35 states and illegal in 15. And it's moving more towards legality, just for the simple reason of the open market works. You know, it sets its own price. I mean, there's plenty of OU games. You can go down there, and you can buy tickets for under face value. But you know what? Next year, when Notre Dame comes to town, it's probably going to be over face value. And kind of like Ron said, it's just what is someone willing to pay to go? You know, no one's forcing anyone to go. And, you know, as far as patrons being badgered, walking up, I think one of the ideas that could be, you have to be off the Chesapeake Arena property, but I think to push it 500 feet away, I think that just opens the door then to push it 1,000 feet away, a mile away, et cetera, et cetera. And then people really have no protection if they buy something and get to the door and can't get into the event. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Michael. Sean Norman?
Good morning, Sean. I will need your name and address for the record.
Sean Norman, 545 Buttermilk Clav Ridge, Choctaw, Oklahoma. Again, I thank you all for letting me address. This is, you know, obviously, an old ordinance that has not been really, you know, touched in many, many years. And I feel that Oklahoma City has kind of been in, you know, in its own little dinosaur. It's the only city ordinance that pertains, you know, to the selling of tickets on the secondary market in the whole state of Oklahoma. And I would encourage everyone to do a little research on cities such as Knoxville, Tennessee, St. Louis, Missouri, you know, where they have had a similar ordinance in place for many, many years, as Oklahoma City has, and they've lifted that cap. I just feel that we live more in a free-market enterprise now than we ever have. And with obviously a big bullseye being put on Oklahoma City with an NBA franchise that is now in town, I believe that we're going to have more and more fraudulent, basically, it's opening the door for more and more fraudulent activities to take place in our community. And we have got to, there needs to be, I don't believe that this ordinance can stay as written, as, you know, as it is previously written, but for what is in here, as far as amending it, is, I think, down the wrong path. It's, I can't say that there's any other city out there that has a major franchise that has anything close to this type of ordinance. You know, other than the buffer zone, there are some, there are some buffer zones out there. But I believe that with the counsel of the National Association of Ticket Brokers, who my company is a member of, and also some of their guidance, I believe that we can put something in place for the city of Oklahoma City that will much more entail for the consumers and also from the retail-type end of the ticketing industry.
All right. Thanks, Sean. Mike Chandler?
I have nothing to say, Counsel.
All right. Good bet. All right. Any other comments or questions from anybody in the audience or council today as we continue to move this process forward?
Harley Williamson and Gary Jarden from SMG, and Tom Anderson, our special programs managers, with us here, are with us here this morning.
Mayor, I missed the meeting that was set up, but if one of the people that are proposing this could come forward, I'd just like a cogent, short reason that we ought to do this. Every reason I've heard, and I've got them second-hand because I didn't come to the meeting, and I apologize for that, but every reason that I've heard doesn't make any sense to me. The real problem is not people on the street. The idea that somebody's being badgered, I've never seen anybody badgered. And I've been to a lot of big cities, a lot of places. I've bought a lot of scalp tickets. I've never been badgered. I've been offered tickets. If I say I don't need a ticket, why they, they don't badger you. So that part I don't understand at all. But I just don't understand, I was kind of there when this baby was born, back in the 80s, and I understand that at that time, the NCAA thought this was a really good idea. And our idea of being a big league city was attracting as many NCAA events as we could. And we did a good job of it, and that's what, that was one rung in the ladder that got us to the point where we are now. Now, I don't understand, I understand it less now than I did then. I mean, the Big 12 tournament this year is in Kansas City. They don't have this rule in Kansas City. So if it made very much difference to the NCAA, they wouldn't be in Kansas City. I just, I would like just a paragraph, somebody just say, "This is why it's a good idea." I mean, I can repeat myself, but if one of you guys could come forward and just give me just a couple of minutes on why it's a good idea.
Councilman White, I think we're starting with the premise that the existing ordinance is inadequate. It's inadequate because it only allows you to sell them for more than 50 cents or the face value.
I understand that part. I understand, though, if we're going to adjust it, the $25 is obviously not enough. The adjustment ought to be to get rid of it. The adjustment shouldn't be to make it different. It ought to be to get rid of it. There isn't any, I don't see one good reason for doing it. The problem is not the price of tickets. The problem is the screwball system we have in selling the tickets initially, where somebody buys 200 or 500 or 1,000 tickets, and that takes them off the street, that forces people to these kind of situations. That's the real problem.
Sure. Gary DeJardin, I'm the regional general manager with SMG. We manage the, excuse me, the Chesapeake Energy Arena and Cox Convention Center. It's a great question, and this is not necessarily an easy issue. Every conference that I go to within the industry, there's a number of sessions and panel discussions about this particular issue. With regard to just eliminating any limit at all as to what you can purchase it for, what's going to happen at that point is you're going to encourage more activity of the fraudulent nature, because then it becomes a free-for-all. That becomes totally a, not necessarily a scavenger hunt, but you've got a bunch of vultures that are, that would be out there trying to take advantage of it, because the internet and technology today has allowed the easy duplication of tickets or print-at-home technology. If you purchase a ticket right now online and about, for a concert today, about 70% of our tickets are purchased over the internet, and a lot of those now are printing at home. So if you have a color printer or a black-and-white printer, you print your ticket at home, you can make, or any individual at that point can make 10 copies, 20 copies of that particular ticket, and it has a barcode on it. That means that anybody at that point can go out on the street and sell it for whatever they want with no repercussions at all. They can sell it, they walk away, the first person who gets to the door to get scanned in gets in. Everybody else gets denied. And the person who purchased it is that, that person who now just took advantage of that, of that ability to be able to sell it with no limit is gone. So if we go back and we look at who purchased the ticket, we try to verify it through a credit card, nobody's going to have the right credit card, and the first person gets in, and that's it. And now the consumer is the one who's going to be harmed, and we deal with that.
Let me interrupt you a second. This doesn't change that at all. If you have a ticket, if a ticket costs 90 bucks...
But what we don't want to do is encourage the activity. Right now, at least, it's limited to 50 cents, or in this one, it's limited at $20. If you completely eliminate it, now everybody really can take advantage of it and encourage even more activity. And what we don't want to do is...
How does that change it? I don't understand. I just don't understand how that impacts what we're talking about. I mean, I'm, obviously, I'm slower than the other eight of us, but I do not understand how that impacts it. If a ticket's $90, the profit is in selling it for $90. A $25 doesn't make any difference. I mean, if I can run a copy of it and sell a piece of white paper for $90, that's where my profit is. The fact that I can sell for 115 is not, that doesn't make any difference. The fraud is in the first 90 bucks. I mean, I just don't understand how this is going to fix anything.
I agree with Pete. We met this morning, Gary, and Tom and I did. And I think the problem that they have is not going to be solved by this ordinance, regardless of how many dollars we put in it now. Does anybody seriously believe that tickets are scalped for only 50 cents above face value right now? No. That's what our ordinance says. Essentially, we have an enforceable ordinance here, and we're going to make it even more unenforceable when we raise it to $20 and push people 500 feet away from the door. Now, the 500 feet, that's a, I don't understand that myself, but if they want to have it that way, that's fine. But I do think that putting a limit on the tickets won't have any serious impact on the problem that Gary is trying to deal with. It is a serious problem. And I do think we might encourage it some, but I think our best efforts could be spent in an educational program, that the public has maybe three legitimate places to buy tickets, at the window, Ticketmaster, and then some kind of ticket exchange. And if a scalper wants to join the ticket exchange and guarantee the value of those tickets, then that's okay. I don't think we've got to limit the membership of that group. But I don't think, I'm like Pete, I don't think this particular ordinance, the way it's drafted, will have any impact on what you're talking about, Gary. There's still going to be people counterfeiting tickets. There are people counterfeiting tickets now at 50 cents a ticket. They're not charging 50 cents for that. They're charging a whole lot more. And so if we say $20, they're going to charge a whole lot more then if they want to, if there's somebody willing to pay it. And it's like my going down to this corner and buying a $5 Rolex watch. I know it's not going to be as good as that, because it's not guaranteed, it's not from a first-rate deal. But I know that, and I could be told that, and it could be educated, that there's, if you buy a ticket online, other than these approved sources, you are at the risk of buying an invalid ticket and being turned away at the door, and at that point, all you'll get is an apology from the manager.
Well, yeah, we would be the ones that end up having to apologize, and then also having to tell that person that they can't get in, and they have to buy another ticket, and they have no recourse. So the consumer is basically out of it, because they, you know, they're out, their money, they're out of their time, and for that person who really wanted to go to the event, if...
Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. They're going to do it one time, and they won't do it again if they're turned away. And you've eliminated at least one person who's not going to be taking advantage of a forged, invalid ticket.
Except that it doesn't necessarily only happen one time, because it happens at pretty much every event. The other thing is that when we have, I guess, it's not, again, it's not a, it's not an easy, there's no easy solution, and there's not a PNC, and this certainly isn't a PNC that's going to just make it go away, because it's not. The secondary market is always going to be there. When we have, but there are two points that I think that we should make. One is that on those events that are not necessarily sold out, when people are walking up to purchase a ticket, we still want to be able to sell that ticket for inventory that hasn't been sold yet, because the promoter and the artist are the ones, well, the promoter's the one who's taking the risk, the artist is the one, many times, that's approving the ticket price. Taylor Swift, for example, could have easily sold her tickets for much more than $65 average ticket the last time that she went on on tour, but she wanted to have that fan loyalty, and she only wanted her fans to have to pay, on average, $65. Not 300, not 1,000, not 5,000, but 65. That was her choice, to build that brand loyalty and that fan loyalty. When you open it up like that, it doesn't allow for that, for those true fans to be able to do it. If you don't have a limit on that, when they purchase the tickets, you now are encouraging the scalpers to be able to go in and snatch those tickets up on the initial on-sale, and so that the fan who wants to buy the ticket doesn't have ready access to it, because the scalpers are, in fact, very sophisticated in how they purchase tickets over the internet. And that has been an issue that we have been battling with for 10 years, even meeting with the Attorney General to review it. And again, there's not an easy solution. What we want to do is at least create an environment that if you're going to resell the ticket, you go to a safe and secure environment to be able to... go to a safe and secure environment to be able to resell your ticket. The consumer knows that it's gonna be a valid ticket, and that they can in fact get in, because right now, if you buy it off the street, you have no guarantee that you're gonna be able to get in. And StubHub on the internet can say all they want about guarantees, but we get people every event that come to the box office that say, well, StubHub told me they were gonna have a representative here, and that my ticket was gonna be guaranteed. Doesn't happen. There is no guarantee on that. The only guarantee is purchasing from the box office or from our authorized ticketing vendor, which right now is Ticketmaster.
And I think that's a very legitimate concern. I don't believe, however, this ordinance does anything to change it.
In the illustration you gave, an artist saying she wants to sell her ticket for $65, just the opposite happens. She sells her ticket for $65, some yo-yo buys 1,000 of them, and he's got 1,000 tickets to scalp. I mean, I, that, that, that just, that illustration doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about. She says 65 bucks, the Hannah Montana concert was a good example of that. The tickets went out at a fair price. They went out at a fair price in thousand-dollar, thousand-ticket chunks, and the people on the street couldn't buy them for $65. They had to buy them through a scalper. The system forced that. If you wanna change that, you have to change the number of tickets that can be purchased by the, you have to find a way to stop that ticket broker thing that buys all the tickets for the purpose of reselling them.
What we wanna make sure of is that the consumer knows that when tickets do go on sale, that they have a fair and equitable chance of purchasing tickets.
But they don't.
And that's what we've been battling. And if we open it up this way, we've just basically have given in and said, okay, the, the scalpers can then profit, but the promoter runs the risk of losing money, because you're, we're gonna suppress the people, we're gonna suppress our ticket sales, because the people don't think they have a fair chance of purchasing tickets. That's where the lottery came in, at the box office, that's why we have it, because before the internet really took off and people really got comfortable with purchasing on the internet, the scalpers would actually pay people to stand in line for days to purchase their tickets, when the other, when, you know, the average person couldn't necessarily do it if they were working, they, they couldn't stand in line for days to do it. So that's where the lottery came in. Every time that we, the scalpers have almost been a step ahead of us all the time, and I think if we open this up with no limits at all, it's gonna be a free-for-all, it's gonna exacerbate the problem as opposed to try to hinder it or manage it.
And I don't wanna repeat a lot of this conversation, and I wanna thank you all. I did have the benefit of attending one of the meetings when we discussed all this, and I get Gary smiling, 'cause he knows what I'm gonna say, but, but I have to agree, I don't think anything in this ordinance deals with the real problem. And I don't think moving people away solves it, I don't think setting a $20 fee, I mean, I understand the rationalization, and I can go for that piece of it, but I just don't think this fixes the problem of fraudulent tickets or people buying too many. And I fall into Pete's category, I think of a person that has gone to an event on the last, at the last minute, and knowing that I was able to buy a ticket there. And if I wanted to go, I wanna be able to buy one. I also wanna be a person that can sell one. You know, if you buy tickets to an event and for some reason can't attend, I'd like to be able to sell them. And I just, I don't think we're doing a service. I, I think we're trying to, to fix something with a couple of bad apples, and Chief is back here, he told me there are more than a couple. I believe that.
Was born on a couple.
But we're trying to solve a problem for some bad apples, and the unintended consequence of that is to really diminish the rights of our citizens to trade. And so I have a significant problem with this.
All right. Larry, and then Skip.
Hey, Gary, I'm, I'm confused also. The, the All Sports Association promotes getting the Big 12 men's and women's basketball tournaments down here. Can, by next week, can I have some empirical evidence that if we do not put some type of a scalping regulation in, they will not consider Oklahoma City again? All right? Say, next venue, next thing, we have a, we wanna attract name artists, you use Taylor Swift. If we do not have this scalping ordinance in effect, will performers like Taylor Swift not come to Oklahoma City? I would like some empirical evidence to say, because I want it, I wanna continue to attract those people in, and the ordinance here does not in any way, in my opinion, address the, the fraudulent activity that could go on. It's gonna go on whether you have this ordinance or not. So what impact would not having this ordinance improvement, if in your eyes, have on getting events like the Big 12 and like the, the performers?
I couldn't say that the Big 12 would, if we didn't have it, wouldn't come to Oklahoma City, and they're, and same thing with the NCAA, because in their bid documents, they ask if there's a anti-scalping ordinance and a preference is given to those cities. That doesn't mean that they're, preferences given to those cities that have that, that doesn't mean that they're not going to, to come, that's just a question that they, that they ask and they wanna know what the rules are going into it. With regard to Taylor Swift, no, it doesn't necessarily mean that she's not necessarily gonna come here, but on the marginal shows that, we're not exactly sure how well they're gonna do. And it could be, you know, it could be Bob Seger, it could be Nickelback, it could be, you know, those shows with the, the high guarantees, if there's a guarantee for an artist that's well into the six digits or, you know, very close to a million dollars, and we're not sure how it's gonna do. We wanna do everything we can to encourage ticket sales to the general consumer. If they've lost confidence in the ability that they have a fair shot at buying the tickets, they're not gonna buy tickets, they're just gonna, they're, they're gonna go to the scalper. And I will say that, you know, in some, some respect, the scalpers have probably done a better job of servicing their customers than, than we have as an industry, because they think that they can buy those tickets. I actually purchased tickets to an event using my credit card, my email address, my professional email address at the convention center, for an event that we knew we had. We hadn't even built it on the ticketing system, and I bought two tickets from a ticket scalper that the tickets didn't even exist. I bought them, they charged my credit card, I had to threaten to go to the Attorney General before they would actually refund my credit card, because they said that they were gonna overnight the tickets to me. They didn't overnight them. They said, we'll send them to you a week prior to the show. I had no idea if I was gonna get those tickets or not. When I said that that was not acceptable, that I wanted those tickets, I was told they would be overnighted to me, and I didn't get them. They still wouldn't refund my credit card until I threatened to go to the Attorney General. And then I told them who I was. That's when I got my credit, that's when I got my credit card credited back. The average person's not necessarily gonna be able to do that, because the average person doesn't run the arena. They knew who I was. That's what we're talking about here. We don't wanna encourage that activity.
Yeah, Skip, first of all, I want to commend you on the, the fine work that you all do at the, at the Ford Center. I think you guys do an excellent job of, of operating the facility and bringing in the various acts that you have in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I too have, one of the questions I asked last time this matter was here, was the issue of, is there any evidence that shows the number of individuals who have been charged under the present ordinance as it relates to this? And, you know, from your experience, you stated that you all met with the Attorney General. And I would assume that the, the reason would be because this is interstate commerce, if it gets to the point where people are purchasing over the internet, you're going from one state over another state line. In reference to that, does the federal government take it that this is an issue on a national level, that from city to city, that this issue needs to be addressed from congressional legislation? Or does the FBI have any involvement?
It's been, it's a great question. It's been broached. I know that there's been some talk of addressing it at, at a federal level, but nothing that has necessarily come, come to realization at this point. I know the state of New York has banned, in a way to try to combat the, the scalping issue. One of the techniques is using paperless tickets, so that the only way that you can forward or resell a ticket is electronically, because it can't be duplicated, and the, and the barcode would then be guaranteed. And the state of New York banned the use of electronic ticketing or paperless tickets. And as a result, I know Bruce Springsteen will not play anywhere in the state of New York because of it.
So that means that there, I mean...
Every, every, there's, I guess my point in that is that it's a complicated issue.
Right.
And, and this ordinance is not necessarily gonna solve every issue with regard to, to ticket scalping at all. It's just a way of updating the, the current ordinance for, from 50 cents to $20 to help somebody if they in fact do, if they purchased over the internet for them and they wanna resell the ticket to be able to recoup all the expenses that they may have incurred from convenience fees and handling and mailing, and basically that's it.
But if you, if you, if you put a limit on the number of tickets that an individual can purchase at one time, as Councilman White stated...
And that happens. There, there are ticket limits on Hannah, on Hannah Montana, I think it was four, Taylor Swift, it was either four or eight. Usually there is a ticket limit that you have to, that, that is set on how many tickets you can purchase in any one transaction.
So if New York can address the issue by eliminating...
Well, what New York did was, they said, they basically said you cannot have paperless ticketing.
Okay.
So you have to have a, and which basically works into the scalper's advantage.
But it takes away the fraudulent internet?
No, what they, they did the opposite. They basically have said, you can't do paperless ticketing. You can still purchase over the internet, but you have to still have that paper ticket, whether you print it at home, or you pick it up at World Call, or what have you. But they eliminated the ability to do paperless ticketing. Which is again, a safe and secure way of doing it, it'd be only one, really one way of doing it, and that's through the internet and be through authorized channels only, which the scalpers don't have ability for.
Mayor, I think we can all agree on two things. The one, our existing ordinance is inadequate, it's antiquated, it's been in place for years and it's inadequate, and this is a complex issue. I think we all agree that there's a lot of different facets to it. We're trying to address a couple of issues at this point in time. One of which is the legitimate ticket exchange process, which is a new technological process that's there. It's for a legitimate process. I, I have season tickets to the Thunder, I sometimes can't use those tickets. The ticket exchange for the Thunder is wonderful. You go online, you go into your account, a couple of clicks, you set the price of whatever it is out there, you're, you're, they invalidate, they sell your tickets, they invalidate your existing tickets, they let the people print out the new tickets, the people that are buying those tickets know that they're valid and real. This ordinance validates that type of process that's out there. It's, the existing ordinance really doesn't address that. So if we don't do anything else, I think we should at least try to validate those type of new technologies and existing processes that are out there. When this old ordinance was adopted, nobody even heard of such a thing that was out there. And we wanna validate those type of processes for valid promoter issues that are out there. The other issue I think we all agree upon is the 50 cents over scalp value is, is not reasonable. Now, whether we go free market and take it totally off, or, or maybe go with the $20, go with 30, go with 40, that's a great policy issue that we can have there, and there's no exact answer on it. You can talk to different people, and reasonable people will disagree on this issue. Our promoters, like Gary DeJardin, our professional sports teams believe that it's reasonable, that the, the Big 12 tournament, the NCAA, think it's reasonable to have some type of limit on that. There, there's a standard out there. These gentlemen who are in the second row here probably don't agree with that. But that's a point of debate that can, that can be had out there, whether or not we have a limit and how high that limit should be to sell it beyond that. The third point is the buffer area around the, the facilities. And again, that's a third issue. It was an attempt to take care of some of the issues that the police have on, on the buffering. We can adopt that portion or not, but I really believe that, one, that we should take a look at this ordinance on legitimizing the ticket exchange programs that are out there, because I think those are very valuable. It's, it's a place we can go to and know that you're getting a real ticket and a, and a place to, to market those. I think we should validate that process. I think we should have the discussion and try to come up with what a limit is, or not to have a limit above the, the ticket price that's out there. The buffering issue, if you don't think that's, that's valuable, we can truncate that at that point in time. And then I would suggest, with all the other issues that are out here, maybe we come up with some type of task force to work with the teams and SMG and our staff and council people and people from the ticket scalping industry to sit down and address some of those other issues that may be out there. This does not fix all ticket scalping issues that are out there, but it's an attempt to fix a couple of things that have been brought forth by SMG and some of the sports teams that are... Well, it legitimizes the, the exchange process that's there. That's valuable.
It doesn't address the main problem they have.
It doesn't address the main problem they have, which is counterfeit ticket, at least what Gary said. Now, paperless tickets, handled properly, could address that situation. And I think we need to give some, some consideration to that, 'cause I remember going to an attraction in London with paperless tickets. I was the only one who could get those tickets with my credit card. It was the credit card I used to purchase those tickets originally. Nobody else could get them.
But what would happen if you were in London and you got sick and you couldn't use them? Was there a way that you could...
Tough...
Tough luck.
Tough luck. Now, at the Philharmonic here in Oklahoma City, if, if I can't go to the Philharmonic, I can pick up the phone, call the Philharmonic office, and it's just, I get a receipt for the value of the tickets the next day. So it's a real simple process to have a ticket exchange system there. And I think a ticket exchange system may make good sense. One, that it has some controls placed on it, and one, that we make the public aware of the fact that this is a legitimate place to buy tickets, or place to buy legitimate tickets. And, and that there only, maybe there's only three places you can do that. You can do it through the box office, through Ticketmaster, and the ticket exchange. Anytime you buy a ticket someplace else, you are putting yourself at risk of buying a, a counterfeit ticket. And it's a public education thing. I don't think, we could pass ordinances to the world look level, and we wouldn't get to that problem. If people are willing to participate in this, take the risk, then this ordinance is not gonna do any good. We can make it $20, or we make $2,000, they're still gonna be there.
Skip? And I, you know, I really think this is, it's almost big government just going a little bit too far. You know, we talk about big government in people's lives, and, you know, to me, this is almost like, you know, well, you know, the little old peddler that's down here on the corner, if, if he's got 15 purses, and he say these purses are Gucci's, and, and some person comes by and gives him $50 and thinks he's, he or she's got a Gucci bag, and, and it turns out that it's not, or he say it's a Coach bag, and it turns out it's not a Coach bag. I mean, it's almost the same thing. You know, that was a bag, that was a purse, this is a ticket. And so now we're just gonna say, well, you know, it's like, you know, fool me one time, that's on, on, on you. Fool me again, that's on me. I mean, it's, it's a fool's world. You know, and if people want to, to, to participate in that type of, of purchasing, that's their right. You know, I, I can't understand, when I go to the games, I see people out there, they have tickets they hold up in the air, and they're asking to purchase tickets. But at the same time, if I didn't have a ticket, and I wanted to get in there that bad, and they said the ticket was $75, and it's a regular $35 ticket, why should I be, I mean, why should that person suffer any consequences if I'd been chosen to give him $75 for the ticket? And it don't make no difference if it was at the front door or two blocks away. I mean, that's free enterprise, and that's the person that, you know, just happened to have an opportunity to make him some extra money on a ticket that, you know, I wanted that bad. And I think you could take that and apply it to every thing that we see, and, and especially, just like the, the food handlers. I mean, they can sell a sandwich for a dollar less than the person who's, who has the restaurant that they're parking their truck right in front of, and we don't say anything about it. I mean, and, and so, I just think that if, first of all, I think before you try to fix something, you need to determine what is the number of problems in, as far as the, the arrest, of, of charges that has been filed against individuals in reference to this, what do we have to look at? As, as Councilman stated, what empirical evidence do we have to show that this has risen to a problem that really needs to be addressed? Or are we just taking individuals out and putting them in places and then, you know, running these sting operations and saying, well, this person sold a ticket for under face value or for whatever the, in violation of the ordinance? But how many real people that are benefiting from going to the game is coming to the city and complaining about the fact that I purchased a scalp ti, a ticket and I couldn't get in the door? Or I purchased a ticket and I found out that when I got in, I could've got that ticket for $30 less? You know, I think that, you know, the, the Thunder program, the Thunder sale and resale tickets, if, if it works, then there's nothing to, 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 to fix it. But if you got a problem that's not working, if you got a situation where it don't work, and you got people who are literally being taken advantage of, and they've come in and complained about it, then I think that's when we ought to talk about trying to, to implement something that fixes it.
Pete, or Pat? I'm sorry, Pete. Anyway, the question I have, is, is there anything in our ordinances, or should there be anything in our ordinances, that would encourage ticket exchange? We have them now. Are they prohibited? Are they, are they permitted by ordinance?
They're not addressed. I believe, is that correct?
And they shouldn't be. I mean, we can't have an ordinance to cover every possible situation in the world. We have too many ordinances now, that we, a lot of them we can't enforce or choose not to enforce. And I think if we, if ticket exchanges are a good idea, they'll develop. And maybe we need to encourage the Garys of the world, and maybe do a little bit of work and, and, and expand that opportunity to more people. Make it more available, make the option known to people, where they, they don't go, they have an opportunity to do some legitimate process, exchange your ticket.
I think, I think the industry believes that this ordinance does increase the likelihood that the, that the ticket exchanges will have more activity. I think what, what this ordinance does is it, is it, it indirectly discourages the selling of tickets on the street. It's, and it's a step in the direction that the industry would like to see this issue head.
Your Honor, I differ with you. I don't think the ordinance will have any impact on this at all. And ticket exchanges, maybe, but the, the fact that if I buy some tickets and I want to go downtown and sell them for more than face value, $25, $35, I'll still do that.
Yeah. I'm saying this is what I believe the industry thinks.
But I think the industry may be wrong in this case, but that's my opinion.
Yeah.
I'm used to being out of step with the rest of the...
What does legal say in reference to the constitutionality of, of free association of people being able to be on the streets with a ticket and being able to hold that ticket up and tell someone what the price of the ticket is?
That I researched very carefully when I was approached to rewrite the ordinance. The question was, we'd like to have a, the issue was, we'd like to have a buffer zone. And there were people who wanted it to be 1,500 feet, or two blocks, or things like that. And I did some research, and that is an issue, the constitutionality of it. But there are courts that have upheld it, if you make the, the buffer zone narrow in scope, and I've made this as narrow in scope as the ones that they've approved, and that is 500 feet from the facade of the, of the event, and only on, it only regulates the conduct on the public streets and right of ways, and that purpose being for public safety issues. If people are standing in the sidewalks, or people are trying to cross the street, and they're trying to sell their tickets, there is a public safety issue connected with that. And it's narrow in scope in that it only applies two hours before the event and one hour after, and has to allow people to congregate and come in and to leave, you know, in a safe manner. Other than that, it doesn't affect the sale of tickets. You can't. I mean, if you want to stand on the sidewalk and sell your tickets, you, you can. I mean, that's, other than in this very narrow time zone that the courts have upheld. And that's all I tried to do was to make one when I was drafting it that we could defend.
If, if I had private property that was within the 500 buffer zone from the facility, and I would allow someone to stand on my private property, they could do whatever they wanted to do, right?
I can't regulate it on their private, the council can't regulate it on their private property. Now, part A of the ordinance that talks about if you sell a ticket in Oklahoma City over 50 cents, that applies anywhere. And if the, and the police have been invited to different hotels and things to enforce or the scalping ordinance. If they're invited, you know, if they're doing a sting operation or something like that, they could go on the private property. But we can't arrest someone for selling a ticket 50, for currently, for 50 cents over the face value if they're standing on the Sheridan property, the Sheridan Hotel property.
But they can, well, how, why would they be arrested in, in a, in a hotel room, then?
If they're selling it for more than the 50 cents.
That's the existing, that's the existing ordinance.
Right. And we're raising that from 50 cents to the $20 with this ordinance.
How many, how many arrests, is it someone from legal, from the criminal division could tell us? How many people have been charged under this ordinance since the inception of it, roughly? I, I was just curious. I mean, we, we have these great concerts to come to Oklahoma City. If this is a real problem, I would just like to know, where's the numbers at?
And I can't tell you that, but...
And, and we just looked at last year, for 2011, we had 42 arrests last year. And we could probably do a lot more if we were more aggressive with it. We based a lot of our arrests and stuff based on complaints from people that were purchasing tickets. You know, that's, that, we didn't, we weren't that aggressive and proactive in that enforcement. So you have to look at that. That's based primarily just on complaints alone, not on us being proactive or having enough personnel in that unit to be able to do a lot with it. So it is a, it is a, it is a problem and an issue. And like, like Wiley said, Mr. Williams said, the buffer zone is strictly, what we have a lot of problem with is that if you have, you have a lot of scalpers that congregate near the intersections, next to the Chesapeake Center, or whatever venue it is, then if you're trying to move 100 people, and you're trying to move cars and everything else, and you've got people that are stopping traffic and stopped to buy tickets, all of a sudden, you've got people blocking the sidewalk to a certain extent, and you need a free flow of traffic crossing that street. I mean, it, it sounds like maybe that's a little ridiculous, but it is true. And they do have, it does create a problem. So having it 500 feet out really helps with us being able to move traffic and people in the areas close to and around those venues. So, and the issue really doesn't change much. This ordinance really doesn't change a whole lot from what you currently have, other than the fact that the promoters can now actually allow the selling of tickets exceeding the amount, or whatever the market will bear, the promoter controls that. That's all this basically does at this point. You're, I agree that it's really not going to reduce the fraudulent issue, other than the fact that it may discourage those, if you weren't allowed anybody to sell a ticket for any price, a lot of people would probably get into the business that are, that are not in it now, based on the fact that it's illegal in Oklahoma City. But there are other issues, and I think it's been mentioned about licensing, even one of the, one of these gentlemen mentioned licensing and permitting. And we think that is, that is one way. On top of what we could currently pass here, on top of that, look at the ordinances for permitting that, that requires those people that are in the business of scalping and selling tickets to be licensed, so that they have some type of identification. So we would, we would, you know, we, we would like a look at that, because we do think that would help us. It wouldn't completely eliminate the fraud, but sure, sure help us in being able to enforce that. Right now, it's pretty difficult.
Because that's my understanding of how Dallas and Houston, they don't address the price. They just say, "If you're going to sell tickets on public property, you have to have a license." Do you have any experience with what's happening in Dallas and Houston?
I don't know. I don't know personally, but I know that, that our unit that works with that, they've looked at other cities, and they, they like the idea of licensing and permitting to, for the enforcement aspect of it. You know, whether or not you allow somebody to scalp on the street is obviously, you know, a policy decision, but, but the permits itself is probably do more for reducing the fraud, at least allowing us being able to, being able to enforce it on the street level. Now, if you're looking at the, if you're looking at Internet sales, it's, it's very difficult. It's, it's very difficult. And that's going on now, within the city and outside, that's very difficult to enforce. But what this ordinance does is it allows a promoter the, the option of allowing those the sales. So for a Thunder game, if you own tickets, it's allowing a season ticket holder to, you know, to sell their ticket for whatever the market will bear. And, and you know, that, that, that's, you know, that's kind of an option that the promoter has, and if a concert comes in. The problem with the concerts that come in is it's probably more prevalent, because you don't have season ticket holders for a, you know, a Taylor Swift concert, that the tickets go on sale, and then you do have that problem, because even, even the scalpers will hire individuals to go online and buy blocks of tickets. You know, they'll pay these people to go online and buy blocks of tickets for the, for this person. That's how they circumvent it. So you have, they can't do it as easily, they can't buy 500 at once, but if they, they can get a block of tickets, and then they can sell them for over the price, to exceed that price, and we don't have really much control over that. So you're right, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not going to eliminate the fraudulent aspect of it. Nothing ever, nothing ever completely will, but there are some things we think you could do.
You know, something Chief, that Chief Mars mentioned in one of our meetings, was having a designated location where people might go. And so could we possibly think about a permitting process and maybe creating a designated location, so that we wouldn't be causing a traffic problem, and we wouldn't, and I think if you coupled that with the exchange ordinance, we've probably made some progress on the fraudulent side, rather than trying to create a bunch of things that don't really address the issue. Just a suggestion.
Call it buttonwood tree.
All right. We done for the day? All right. This item will be heard for final hearings at next week?
Yes, sir.
Next week, all right. Thank you all for coming down. We appreciate everyone's input. We do need to vote to move it forward. Cast your votes moving this item forward, and we'll have a final hearing next week on the ticket scalping ordinance. All right, we're on to item 8E. This is likewise a public hearing to discuss this item, and we will not be voting in, a final vote on today, but we are continuing the possibility for people to have public input, and this has to do with jumping off of buildings and jumping off of towers, and it would make such activity illegal. Any comments or questions on this item today? Yeah. All right. No one has signed up to speak?
Unless you have a permit or a license.
Yeah, let's joke. And cast your votes, and that item will be also voted on next week. We're on item 8F. It's a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8F, dilapidated structures?
Yes, sir.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8G? All right, how about a motion?
Yeah.
You have a second? All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 8H is an item that would update our personnel policies. I know Monica's here to give us more details.
Well, I just wanted to say that these policies would amend the existing policies, which were updated in 2005. And we did use a 30-person committee to update these policies. They were, it consisted of representatives from throughout the entire organization, from different departments throughout the organization. This is a very important document. It applies to everybody within the city organization. They utilize it on a, on a daily basis. We were going to highlight a few of the more significant changes that were made. I want to thank the entire committee. I mean, they, they met for months to review these documents and amend these documents, and it includes some changes based on legal changes, changes in federal law, and based on policies that you may have adopted since the last policies were amended. I also want to, I'm going to turn it over to Monica Coleman, who's the Assistant Personnel Director, and I want to thank her. She provided oversight for this entire process. Kenny's Department, the Municipal Counselors' Department Office, I'd like to thank them. They completed a very thorough review, as did our City Auditor's Office. We wanted to make sure that we got everybody's input before presenting these policies to you for possible adoption. So I'm going to turn it over to Monica, and she's just going to highlight a few of the major changes that we made.
Good morning. Monica Coleman, Assistant Personnel Director. As Diana said, I'm going to just touch on a, just a few of the more significant changes that we've made to our policies. One of, one of the changes that we made is to incorporate the prohibition on smoking in city buildings that was adopted by the council some time ago, and we've included in that policy a prohibition on smoking in city vehicles. Right now, that is an issue that is regulated by departments individually through their own departmental policies, and, and we've now incorporated that into our citywide personnel policies, so that we will have a consistent application regarding the prohibition of smoking across the city for all departments.
Monica, may I ask a question just about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Is, is there a place there in the policy, then, that we might direct people to the kinds of things that we have to help for smoking cessation? I mean, can we reference, at the same place we have the anti-smoking policy, some reference or to direct people?
No, we don't have it specifically in the personnel policies, although we've been trying to, we're doing a couple of things. One, we're doing a survey of our employees right now on our wellness programs, and we're trying to do a better job of getting out the, the wellness benefits the city offers. And amongst those are our assistance, our employee assistance program, but also our smoking cessation programs that are available. So we're trying to do a better job of getting that information out to our employees.
And we are providing smoking cessation programs on a quarterly basis, so that information...
There just might be, I'm just thinking, there might be a place that we could companion those two, or marry those two, so that people were aware.
They are not currently included.
One of the other changes that we've made is the incorporation of the reference to sexual orientation protection that was, that was approved by the council several months ago into our discrimination provision. While that's been policy for a while, it is now reflected in our policy book with this revision. We've also incorporated more restrictive conflict of interest language. We worked closely with the City Auditor's Office to enhance that language. For example, there would be some serious consequences for an employee who may use information that's designated as confidential by statute rule or city ordinance. If that's information that they, that they obtained through the course of their employment, we don't want the improper use of information, and we expect full disclosure from our employees in the event they may be facing a conflict of interest situation, or even the potential for that. We have a provision in the policies that requires them to, to fully disclose that as soon as they become aware of that, that conflict or potential conflict. And finally, we've incorporated changes from the Family and Medical Leave Act into our policy pertaining to family members or primary caregivers of our military. A family member for a qualifying exigency can get 12 weeks, and those are outlined in the, in the FMLA, but things like taking care of business if they're called away to active duty, that kind of thing. Or they get up to 26 weeks if they, if their military family member is injured and requires care once they've gotten home. So that is now included in our policy as well. Those are...
I was just going to mention one other thing, actually, a couple of other things. These policies are provided to all new employees before they are allowed to report to their respective departments. So during new employee orientation, we are, we do provide all of our new employees with these policies. I also wanted to mention, because I failed to do that previously, that the labor groups were also provided a copy of the proposed policies to review and comment.
Ms. Berry, may I ask a question? And this really relates to, going back to our firm, we have similar policies and procedures, and ours, as it relates to harassment and discrimination, now, I mean, it mirrors what the city's now states, and it's recommended by the American Institute CPAs. But we have a recommendation that all employees sign that, that they've read it and understand these policies. Do we have anything, any type of requirement like that? And the reason why we were told to do that is, is just to, as an employer, better protect ourselves if issues like that were to arise, at least the employee could not state that they were not aware of those policies.
When we distribute these amended policies, if they're adopted by the city council today, we will distribute those policies to the various departments and require that they have employees sign that they have received a copy of those policies.
Thank you. Well, we have to sign that not only did we receive them, but we've read them, and we understand them, so...
We can include that language as well.
How about a motion?
Okay.
All right. Any other comments or questions on item 8H? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I is an opportunity to adopt the Brick Town Strategic Plan.
Mayor A.J. Kirkpatrick is here to talk to us a little bit about this today. This plan has had some stakeholder groups that have been involved in it over time. A full presentation of this plan was brought to council on October 18th and adopted, or brought before the council on that time. or brought before the council on that time. Subsequent to that, it's gone to the Bricktown Urban Design Committee on January eleventh and the Downtown Business Improvement District on December fourteenth. Russell is here.
So, we're really just here to answer any, any questions you may have and I, and I wanted to reiterate again that we have gone through this planning process. A.J. has been in charge of this and has done an outstanding job in pulling this together. Our goal is really to look at what the, the unmet opportunities are in Bricktown, to start to pull together a better understanding of, of what the market audiences are there with the available land uses, look at better ways of trying to facilitate those audiences being the client base that we have and being able to use the Bricktown area and increasing the collaboration between all the different property owners and stakeholders, the lessees, the users in the Bricktown area so that we can be a little more strategic going forward about how to make Bricktown an even better place. And we are moving forward with implementation, but we've before you today to get, to get your support for this document. This document doesn't commit you to anything financially, each of the individual recommendations in the plan will be brought back if those have a fiscal implication to them. And we have Jeanette Smith here with Bricktown Association as well. I know the association is meeting next Friday to, to look at how they will be able to use the plan and how they can reorient themselves to be more strategic as they move forward as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Councilman Ryan?
Excuse me, Russell, the, the general public have a chance to, to look at this plan. We have some public meetings that involve, excuse me, any citizen?
We, we've had some meetings over in Bricktown with, with people over there, those have been open meetings, generally attended though by property owners and tenants in the Bricktown area. We haven't done a broad public meeting as such.
People are very possessive about our Bricktown. They, they react to changes down there pretty severely and I was hoping that we had an opportunity, gave our public an opportunity to see this plan before we adopt. Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Any other comments or questions here? Russell, yeah, Skip and then Pete.
I was concerned about the public having an opportunity to participate or even see the, the plan. One of the concerns that continues to, to bother me and of course as a result of citizens in the area is that they see Bricktown as far as northeast Oklahoma City as part of Ward Seven and they see the, the growth of the boundary line as it relates to what was downtown Oklahoma City as how it's going farther to the north and to, to the, to the, to the east. And of course, those individuals who have memories of, of what the Bricktown area and some parts of the deep use, you know, historically was. And now to see the, the development and the various projects that are part of the plan and, and that that's already there, I'm kind of concerned why we don't have more efforts being made as it relates to some real services for citizens in this area. It's not a grocery store, there's no drugstores. Basically, anything that, you know, people need is for services or really not part of this plan, at least you don't see it. And people continue to ask, you know, when is there going to be a major concern as it relates to grocery outlets? And, and the only reason why I'm concerned about it is that I remember a very similar project like this from Dallas and it was all basically consumed with two or three type of venues and ultimately it lost everything.
The intent, I mean, a large part of this is to diversify what's available there and to make the existing amenities even better. I mean, one, one of the, you know, primary recommendations, for example, is to increase on-street parking. So it's looking at what we have and trying to enhance those existing, those, those existing services. It's not so much a, it's not a development plan as such in terms of a land use plan identifying where areas should be developed. We do have provisions in there that say, we would like to encourage the owners of those properties that have vacant upper floors to develop those floors, but we don't have a specific plan about how to target that. We just think that that's important to the future growth and development of Bricktown and therefore are highlighting it as something that needs to be addressed. We're hoping that is, is something that the private sector will take on because it's in their best interest, it's in the best interest of the, of the Bricktown district as a whole. A.J., did you have something?
I, I think your, your points are spot on and actually they, they, they are correct to a lot of things we had in mind when we worked on the plan and I think the public, they see a few things. They see the parking problems, the perceived parking problems and, and maybe the lack of general services that you're describing. And what we really tried to get across in the document to all the property owners is you have to take some intermediate steps to even get there. And one of the things is you need to look at some other land uses. We, we spent a lot of time in the document talking about diversifying the land uses, that we need to use some of those upper floors for residential and office. And when we talk to retail experts, when we start to solve those upper floor problems, then some of the other things that the public sees will become easier on, on all of us.
All right.
Mayor, my, I had a couple of comments. One is, was this book produced in-house?
Yes, it was, A.J. and my staff put this in.
It is absolutely a great book, I mean, in terms of showing what we're doing and, and I suspect it'd be a good tool for some, a recruiting tool for a business that was going to come there. And I would argue a little bit that the West End in Dallas did not fail for that reason. The West End in Dallas had a gigantic mall that was, had a lot of retail and all that stuff in it. But my, my thought on why the West End failed was because they didn't do the kind of things that we're doing here. They didn't have the kind of planning, the long-range planning that we're trying to do here. They just kind of let it grow like topsey, it seemed to me, and then what happened at the end was that it couldn't support itself. They just didn't, it wasn't as nearly as organized and I think having been an early resident in Bricktown back in, in, in the mid, late, mid to late eighties, I was, I had my law office there before Park and Meters and Spaghetti Warehouse and, and it, in one sense, it has not grown as, in a way that is as organized as one might like it. But compared to the way some of these other districts have grown in other cities, it's been a very well-organized growth. We've, we've been on top of it and, and I would say that things just like this are what's going to continue to encourage really good growth there. I think the grocery stores, the drugstores are going to come when the private sector determines they can make money out of it. And, and we, and this is the kind of thing that will put the private sector in a position of thinking they can make money. I think there are grocers right here in Oklahoma City that are willing to come in without incentives to, to, to move into areas like this, given, with, given some help, some assistance, but perhaps not financial incentives, to come into these areas and do what we need done. And I think we're just right at the edge where that's going to happen. Looking at this, I think, I'm even more convinced, I had, I just had this this weekend, but I can't, I can't help but be impressed by just the quality of the presentation and the work that's gone into doing this. I want to tell you, I think it's a good job and I think this will move us in the direction we need to go in.
Thank you. We, we tried to really take pride in the document and it was a first for our division to, to do an in-house document like this, so we tried to do it very well.
And I like the fact that you can read it. So many times we get these, these reports from these outside consultants and the print is so small, you need two magnifying glasses to get it so.
A little plus to our audience here.
Thank you.
David?
Your Honor, Russell, you know, the presentation, and it is a nice one, leads me to think that the focus is more on an entertainment area, but long-term, I know you want retail to begin to become a big part of Bricktown. Will retail ever be a part of the core part of downtown or will that be the location of any retail development in the central part of Oklahoma City?
Well, we, we absolutely support that goal. Retail, of course, has always been the most difficult element to attract and I think you'll find that in any other downtown community, in any peer city that we've been to, we find that, that same issue everywhere, that retail is the hardest thing to attract. Our goal is to try and diversify the amenities and the services provided by the Bricktown area, so we're recognizing that it has been, has developed so far primarily as an entertainment district, but there is office over there and there is some housing and we're beginning to see more interest in both of those different avenues. And, and therefore, as we create more of that, then we expect that, that a lot more of that retail is going to follow. I think hitting a critical mass is going to be important. Some of the retail that hasn't worked there has been a little isolated and, and for that reason has been perhaps a little overly ambitious in that respect, but, but people are still trying.
Oh, no, and, and I'm, I'm hopeful that it will take off. My question is, do you ever see retail taking hold of downtown where we are right here or will all retail end up in Bricktown?
Retail is, is, it isn't all that difficult, it's, it's a function of people and, and that's when retail's going to be successful. And retail in downtown Oklahoma City is really a mixed use and it's a combination of a number of things. It's more people working downtown, it's more people living downtown, it's more people coming downtown for conventions and it's more people coming down, not conventioners out of town, but local people coming down for the entertainment dollars and leisure time spending habits that they have. And it's a combination of all four of those things and all four of those are growing in downtown Oklahoma City. And if they continue to grow, then there's going to be a collective mass that will make retail viable and, so you've got to have, you've got to have all those things to make it happen.
Sure. Let me clarify my question a little bit more then. When I say retail, I'm thinking in terms of like a, a department store or something along those lines. Do you envision that type of retail ever coming back to downtown Oklahoma City or if it will come into the central part of the city, it'll end up in Bricktown?
I, I believe it will eventually, I'm not saying it within the immediate future, obviously, but the whole retail industry is changing, it's becoming much more of an experiential thing. People want a, a quality shopping experience and, I mean, driving from one strip center to another to accomplish your goals is really not doing that, it's a utilitarian approach to meet your retail needs, but I think as we know, retail shopping is, is very much a, a prime recreational activity in Oklahoma City. So creating that right kind of environment for people, I think is going to put us at a competitive edge and whether it be downtown or whether it be Bricktown, that, I think, both of those areas together are going to provide that opportunity in the future. But, but to get them to come here is really going to require that we address all those other pieces of the puzzle. So it, it'll take time, but, you know, my vision for, you know, downtown and Bricktown in the, in the long run is going to include that kind of offering.
In both locations?
Probably in both locations and, and as, as the city manager had pointed out, it's, it's difficult for us to, to, to fully direct the, the retail market and they'll go where they believe that they can, they can have an impact. In a lot of cases, it's going to depend on the first ones in providing the model and, and proving that it's successful for the others to follow. And we're starting to see that in some, some areas like Automobile Alley, for example.
Anybody else?
One of the things I've observed in going to St. Louis regularly for the last fifteen years or so is that they, they really concentrated on bringing the kind of activities downtown that we've, like the, the, they brought the Cardinals downtown, they, they brought the Rams downtown, they brought those things downtown, so they started to pull people back into their downtown area. And then they, then what happened was small little like grocery store delis, restaurants would kind of spring up and they, and then all the vacant office buildings started to be converted to condos. And I can see a parallel to what we're doing here. And then now, there's a really nice Snooks Grocery Store right downtown, just right in downtown St. Louis, there's this really nice grocery store, full service, meat, everything there. But that has been a gradual thing as it just kind of went through this cycle of it, bringing the, bringing all the high-class entertainment to the, to the downtown, renovating what, they didn't, fortunately for St. Louis, they didn't tear their downtown down, but, but they, they started to renovate the buildings that were there, started bringing those big activity things in, little delis spring up and, and now the, and the apartments started, condos started coming. And I've watched it over about fifteen years and it's been a real renaissance just to go there and watch all that happen and, and I think that's kind of the path we're on, we're not quite where they are yet with the, with the big grocery store, but we, we see buildings that are not being utilized for one purpose are now being converted. You know, I, I've always thought that the, the top, what, five floors of, of where the Spaghetti Warehouse building is, somebody needs to come in there and put something, homes or offices or something in that, that, it's already there. I mean, that just put lots of bodies there.
That's a key point in the report.
Right. And, and the same thing true with the big, what's that big bomb shelter there that's north of it, that giant concrete building?
The Mighty Murphy Building.
Yeah, right. Now that's another building that could be redeveloped, there's lots of space in it that you could put condos and, or offices or something there. Once that starts to happen, I think you'll see these little combination deli grocery store things start to spring up to supply what's there and then eventually you're going to get to a grocery store, you're going to get to a drugstore, you're going to get to some of those things.
And we'd agree completely, I think those parallels that you draw there are, are very pertinent and if you look at an example, Kansas City, which is not dissimilar to Oklahoma City in terms of the scale of the downtown, and they have a, a very vibrant downtown grocery store that was put together by a local family essentially and they've made it an experience. And it's very popular and very successful and that's the kind of thing that we believe would work here tomorrow if somebody were able to put that together. We haven't found anybody to do that yet, but I, I think we're ready and I think that will come in the near future. I think those upper floors, they've been ready for fifteen years, but they would have worked if we'd done them fifteen years ago, so it's a little befuddling to us why they're still vacant because it's a, it's a missed market, it's there, it just needs to be filled in.
I think one of the other key components to this as far as the, the density and attracting the individuals is the affordability of some of the new housing projects in the area. I think there's a lot of people that would, would be residents, but they cannot afford the prices of the condos or the lots that are presently there. And I understand that there is some concern now with one of the new projects to make sure that there is a created component that gives some affordable housing for individuals to, to live in some of the new developments.
And it, it was a really key point that at the same time we were doing this, we're also working on downtown housing city and we got back some interesting survey results from that. And it showed that older people that may have a little more disposable income actually would prefer to live on the west side of downtown. Bricktown really, what we've, what we've learned from that is Bricktown really should be trying to focus more on the younger crowd that would be willing to, to deal with some of the, the entertainment district, you know, issues that you're going to run into in terms of living over a bar or, they're really going to prize those sort of things, that they're going to have all those entertainment options within walking distance. Those that have a little more disposable income are probably going to want to be closer to the art museum and some of the things that you'll find on the west side of downtown. So that is something we're really trying to get across is the stuff that's in Bricktown proper, it does need to hit, hit an affordable price point to attract younger people.
The affordability is a, is a high priority for us and, you know, it's a challenge, but we, we recognize it's really important and we're certainly going to support whatever, whatever we can do to make that happen.
All right, good to go? Thank you guys.
Thank you all.
Do we have a motion on item eight I?
No.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight J, understand we do need executive session?
Yes, sir.
How about a motion then? Cast your votes, item moves to executive session. Item eight K, understand we do not need executive session?
No, no information on this item.
Do we need to vote on that then, Francis?
Motion to strike.
Motion to strike. All right, cast your votes, item is struck. Item eight L, is claims recommended for denial? Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under claims recommended for denial? All right, how about a motion then? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Items from council, item nine A is a legislative committee issue. Pete, you want to speak on this? Pete, you want to speak on this?
We discussed at the last legislative committee meeting, the current status of the effort at the legislature and by the State Ethics Commission to enhance reporting requirements. And this resolution is something that we decided to propose to the council, to be added to our legislative agenda. It's really pretty simple. It just asks that we support any effort in the legislature that will increase the amount of disclosure required. There's a lot of turmoil about it. There's turmoil on the Ethics Commission itself about which is the right direction to go. I think most people believe that Citizens United did not totally, well, did very little to the disclosure side. It only changed it from the standpoint that it made corporations able to contribute, and it took the limits off. It did not deal with disclosure. And so, this, we're trying to operate within the law. The Citizens United now is the law, and we're trying to operate within that, but try to still get the maximum amount of disclosure that we can. And this basically is just putting the council on record that that's what we'd like, whatever. Amy's here, she can talk about it. I saw her come in.
Well, I was running council, so I don't know where you are.
But we're really just, I mean, I'm being redundant, as I always am. But it's just an effort to try to, as broadly as possible, encourage the legislature and to support any effort that can be made, to make disclosure broader than it is now.
Your Honor, a question. Is there legislation now being written at the legislature?
There are suggestions. There's a number of things that could morph into that. There is some actual effort directly.
You used the word morph, and that sort of bothers me a little bit. I don't want to ask for an apple and get a banana. And I think before, I feel comfortable with the resolution supporting anything that the legislature does. I'd like to see what they propose. I'm a little bit afraid. I don't have any real direct experience personally, but I've seen it happen before, where a group wants something done, and they don't get exactly what they want, they get something close, and they've already pledged to support it, and they put themselves in an embarrassing position. I would like to see us wait. I think this may be a little premature. I have no idea, no argument to concept. I would like to see what they propose before we get involved in supporting a resolution.
I would say, if we would just adopt the federal election laws, that that would be appropriate, I mean, because they do require disclosure. Over 200, yeah, not 250, but over $200 is any contribution, whether it's to a super PAC or through a political action committee, you have to disclose. Now, again, not to, well...
That's how you get all the, when you hear what's going on now in the primaries on both sides, when these giant contributions are made, that's why you know what they are, because of federal, and you know who gave them, because the federal disclosure requires that.
Oklahoma could adopt the same rules that are in place right now, and you'll get that disclosure. I'm going to say it again, with one exception, and that's the 501(c)(4) organizations do not have to disclose their individual contributions. But they have to expend more than 50% of their monies towards non-election items. So, you know, anyway. I mean, it'd be simple. I don't know what the problem is, seriously.
Well, even the Ethics Commission is divided on how to do it. And that's why we can't, I don't have any, we don't have anything specific. We just want them to do, to make it more transparent. That's, when bills come forward, I think we can discuss them. We certainly will discuss them on the legislative committee, and they'll be in the report that you get on a regular basis from our lobbyists. But in terms of having one, I don't have one specifically.
Yeah, I'm on the legislative committee, as you all know. And Amy and Pete and I were talking about this particular resolution. There were two approaches to go in this resolution. One of them, Pat, was right down what you were talking about. We decided that a more general approach would be applicable at this time, rather than get into specifics as far as what we were looking for. The overall approach that we thought that the council would embrace would be the idea of more transparency, more timely reporting. And we recognize that there were two aspects to this. One is the amount of reporting that a candidate does with his or her own campaign committee. And there was a law passed last session by the legislature, which, quite frankly, in my opinion, takes the transparency and the reporting that you and I have to do, that we were doing under the old way, and reporting to Francis, and going to report to the Ethics Committee, which takes away the timing and the transparency. And so, the state actually went backwards. But you've got that going on, and then you've got the other issue going on that you all have talked about, as far as the super PACs, and the amount of transparency and timeliness of that is a whole different issue. So, rather than get bogged down, quite frankly, in details, we kind of collaboratively, correct if I'm wrong, Pete, thought maybe just a general thing, and said, hey, we are interested in transparency, integrity, timing, and we want our lobbyists to keep us apprised of that, and then we want to address these issues as they come up, as we go along, to say, hey, you're going the wrong way, or you're going the right way. And that's...
And that's exactly my point. I think, I'm 100% sympathetic to the concept here. Transparency, adequate disclosure is important to the integrity of the electoral process. We've got it at city level here, now, with this one exception. And what I'm concerned about is, we get a result that we want to, we wind up opposing this piece of legislation. I think that a resolution that would address the concept that you all have expressed, which I think is good, rather than say we're going to support legislation before we know what that legislation looks like. That's, I'm a little bit uneasy with that idea, but...
Well, that's certainly not the intent.
I understand.
So, I mean, I don't think we'll be doing that. I think we'll know what we're supporting before we put our representatives out there.
But somebody's going to read this back to us if we do it. We said we're going to support the legislation, not Amy.
24 hours a day, seven days a week, that's what Amy...
No, I don't think so. We can't put that burden on her if we, you know...
All right.
I don't think anybody's going to put a lot of stock in this at all. I mean, this is so vanilla. This is so meaningless, so weak. I mean, I just don't think that they're really even going to care. I agree. I mean, the real problem is we have a political subdivisions Ethics Act, which is completely outdated and inadequate. I mean, I don't understand why that's not mentioned in here. I mean, that's our real problem. The PSEA, that's what we just met with the Ethics Commission for the last few months on. The PSEA is completely broken. We have no enforcement mechanism whatsoever. We're floating adrift at sea. That's the real problem. I mean, without subscribing to any particular policy recommendation, how about just saying, hey, the PSEA is broken, we need to move quickly to fix it? I mean, without saying exactly how you want to, I mean, just saying, hey, we deserve to have an enforcement mechanism. And the Ethics Commission has said, we don't want to mess with your elections. We don't have the personnel or the firepower, we just, so just say, I mean, this is disturbingly and disappointingly vanilla and weak.
Okay. Well, Pete, you want to make a motion?
Despite the disturbing weakness, I'm going to ask that we adopt it.
All right. We have a motion in a sec. Any other comments or questions? All right. A yes vote passes Resolution 9A. Cast your votes. And it passes 8-1. Gary, you want to continue with items from council?
I really don't know whether I want to or not, Mayor, to tell you the truth. I think it is interesting, before we leave that subject, or if we've already left it, there's an article in the paper this morning about a grassroots effort up northeast against Citizens United. And it's based on corporation, I guess the ruling must have either said or implied that corporations have the same right as citizens. And there's a grassroots movement to say that's not true. Corporations aren't people, and they don't have the same rights as people. But, so, I don't think this issue is over with yet. So, it, I completely agree with the opinions and the attitude of this council, and I think we have an emotional level and a sincerity to do something with this. The problem is, that same emotion doesn't exist at the state level or the federal level. It just doesn't. And unfortunately, we can't make them change. So, until the citizens get to the point where they force the people on the state level or the federal level to do something about it, we're going to sit here and we're going to continue to be emotional about it and not be able to do a whole lot other than that.
Completely agree with Gary. It's got, the citizens have got to get this, have got to apply the pressure. On the national level, I was reading in the Nation, it's estimated 196 people are responsible for 80% of all the super PAC money that's been spent so far. 196 people. Founding fathers would be just absolutely embarrassed and ashamed that this is what it's turned into. And then, at the municipal level, it can be so much more destructive, as we saw last year. So, citizens have got to apply pressure, and if you see it in our next city council elections, you've got to react as soon as you see it. I just want to say, on a personal level, we had a memorial for Anthony Shadid on Saturday, and I just cannot say enough about the Civic Center personnel, Jim Brown in particular, Brent, all his staff, the ushers that were just so sensitive to the family and everyone. I couldn't be able to talk about this. I've said everything I want to say about that, but I just want to just say from the family how grateful and how appreciative and how professional and dignified and stately the Civic Center staff are. It was just amazing, and they have completely, I was already won over, but they have won me over on a personal level at just such a high degree. I just cannot say enough about Jim Brown and his whole staff, and how wonderful they were, and what Oklahoma City produced and lost. In terms of its history, I don't know if all of Oklahoma City understands exactly, but we've just lost a very historical figure that's been celebrated around the world. And we should be proud as a city that he came from this city and has honored it. Thank you.
Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I had the privilege of participating a little bit with the NAIA National Swimming Championship. It was the host school, it was OBU down in Shawnee, which has just reinstituted their swimming program. The local support was all done by OCCC with their venue out in South Oklahoma City in Ward 5, where the actual competition took. There were 20 teams present from east coast to west coast. Just a great group of young people who participated, guys and gals, swimmers, and it was just an encouragement to see, as a group like this come to Oklahoma City. They're coming next year also for their competition. It adds to our quality of life, and my congratulations to both OBU and OCCC for their efforts in getting NAIA here. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Pete?
I just want to add to Ed's comments about the memorial service for Anthony Shadid last Saturday. One of the things I was struck by was what a citizen of Oklahoma City he was. He was obviously a citizen of the world, but the number of references among writers from The New York Times and The Washington Post about his connection back to Oklahoma City, about what a citizen of Oklahoma City, how much he loved and cared about Oklahoma City. He brought his family back. He had a home in Lebanon, I guess. He built a home in Lebanon, but he made sure that he brought his family back to Oklahoma on a regular basis, so they would experience what he grew up, the way he grew up. And I was, I thought that was very, I was very touched by that. I think, without being such a citizen of the world, to have that much respect for Oklahoma City really touched me.
David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'd like to congratulate the employees who were recognized last week for their 25 years of employment with the City of Oklahoma City. I'm sorry, I don't know the number, but there were quite a few there. And the one thing that I always respond to when I'm asked, what's the most surprising thing about joining the council? And that's just the dedication and the quality of the employees who work here for the City of Oklahoma City. And those who were recognized for their 25 years of service last week really exemplify that, and it was just very impressive. Secondly, I'd like to invite those who have an interest as to the direction of I-240 to attend a meeting. It's a kickoff meeting this afternoon at the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce. We're going to have a gentleman from the Urban Land Institute speak about the program that is just beginning today with a grant from the Urban Land Institute that was granted to the City of Oklahoma City, and in conjunction with the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce and the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, to see what we can do in a joint public-private partnership to improve mainly the retail perspective of I-240. It, at one point in time, was the centerpiece for retail in South Oklahoma City, and it's just been through some challenges, but we hope this is the start of turning those things around. And so, I invite anyone who may be a stakeholder, either has a business there along I-240 or owns property along I-240, or has an interest of that area to attend. It begins at 4:00, and I think it'll be a very interesting meeting. Thank you.
Meg?
Great, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things. One is, in addition to all the wonderful employees we have on our staff, we also have a tremendous amount of volunteers that are participating in all kinds of activities for our city. And I really wanted to express my appreciation to all of those folks serving on your MAPS subcommittees. We're getting tremendous amount of input from people on every one of the areas that MAPS 3 is working in, and I just kind of wanted to express how much staff and council appreciate the feedback that we're getting from all of those various stakeholders. A second thing, and Jim, this maybe is directed to your office. I think with the new I-40 opening, we've got some visual challenges, perhaps, both in the way of signage. I'm just hearing from folks that people coming into town don't know how to find the memorial, they don't know how to find the art museum. You know, it's a whole new world out there. There are also some fairly unfortunate visuals when you drive in from a trailer park to, you know, vacant land and shacks, and it's just changed the dynamic of the way people enter town. We knew that, and that's part of why we've been working on Court Ashore, but I think there might be some short-term fixes. So, if we could get a group of stakeholders together, and I think Mike Carrier from the CVB ought to be involved, but just some folks that could take a look at this and help us even on a short-term basis while we wait for the boulevard to be finished. A couple of quick, just congratulations. We opened Fillmore Elementary School last week, which is another very successful MAPS for Kids project. And the Oklahoma Arts Institute has moved their offices from Norman back to Oklahoma City and has relocated on Automobile Alley on 9th Street. Fabulous new location, so I wanted to congratulate them. And finally, Ed, I was delighted to read on the front page of The New York Times on Sunday, the article by Tyler Hicks, who spoke at the memorial service about those last couple of days coming out of Syria. And I thought it told some of the nicest stories that we heard at the memorial about the importance of community and spontaneous community development. And so, I would encourage anybody that has the opportunity to take a look at Sunday's New York Times and read that lovely piece.
Skip?
Maybe this is to the manager's office also. That is, the 180 project and the downtown construction and the closing of streets. Is it any way possible that we could use the information that we get, I know I received the emails sometime, to elevate that to the general public, that use of either Channel 20 or some of the other news venues? Because coming downtown is going to be a real challenge. And I know there's a lot of people for court, for other purposes, that have to come downtown, that don't work downtown, that may already know prior to the day that they leave and the next morning what streets are going to be closed. But I just think that we could probably do a little bit better job of promoting, I'm going to say, I say promoting, I hate to say promoting, but at least advising citizens of the various streets that are closed and where you can come into downtown, Ed, because the exits are sometimes challenging. I mean, I drove around for 20 minutes this morning, couldn't figure out what was going on, but I think that was another part... on, but I think that was another problem, but, but I think we could, you know, look at that.
Very valid point. We, we use a lot of ways to communicate the information. We, we tweet about it, we put it on our Facebook page, we put out Friday afternoon advisories that go out that are emailed to a number of stakeholders groups. Krista gets those informations out. We've got local signs downtown. We've got staff that's working with the business areas in, in the area. We're doing a lot of different fronts to get the communication out, but it's still a challenge. We need to do more, so I appreciate those comments.
Okay. And, and I too would, would like to comment on the fact that the, the loss of, of Anthony Shadid was to Oklahoma City, you know, a great icon in reference to journalism, and it's, it's something that, you know, the City of Oklahoma City ought to look at for, for purposes of recognizing not only just from his death and his memorial, but as a way of recognizing the continuation of, of his presence in the world of journalism and his, his desires and, and his commitment to humanitarian issues all over the world. And the other one is, is, you know, we, we are addressing this issue of, of abandoned buildings, and I think we have some meetings set up with, with staff and some other consultants. And I had started receiving some complaints as it relates to a project of, would have the potential of being a new development in northeast Oklahoma City, and because of a, a present development that has been there for over 30 years or more, and has been such a dilapidated issue that the citizens were so outraged about the status of one, they didn't want to see another one come in, that ultimately could, could result into the same type of conditions. I went out and looked at this facility, this, this place this past weekend, and I think that we allow these absent landlords, these apartment owners, they get away with entirely too much as it relates to code enforcements and our ordinances. I saw some parts of this facility that wasn't fit for a dog to live in, but yet and still there are little children running around. There is, you know, open electrical wires hanging from parts of the building, you know, broken windows, half boarded up, and, and it was just absolutely deplorable. But yet still, we, we come in and we, we, we put mandates on people who own maybe a single house or, and, and we put timeframes on them to, to either get it in condition of, of code, of our codes, or the next thing it knows, it's going to be on the, on the list to be demolished. And, you know, we got some, some land, some absentee landowners or apartment owners in this city that they need the same type of pressure because they are just absolutely disrespectful to any degree of our code as it relates to those projects.
Skip, why aren't they being enforced? Do you have a perception as to why they're getting away with it?
I, I don't know. Maybe, maybe it's, it's too big of an issue, you know, but I took some pictures, and I'm going to, I'll show them to Mr. Locke and let him evaluate the, the site and send someone out there, but I mean, Mayor, this apartment is, is, is an absolute ghetto, and that's exactly what it is. And it's at the corner of 23rd and I-35. And it's unsafe for children to be there. It's, and, and some of these poor people, they are there because, you know, they advertise free, you know, the bills are paid, but people shouldn't have to live like that. And I'm, I'd be willing to bet that they got some type of governmental assistance when they open this place up or whoever is, is, is operating the place now, and it's just not safe.
Well, let's look at it.
We'd be happy to get staff to go out and take a coat sweep. Pat?
Your Honor, based on the experiences I've had this morning up here, I'm going to follow some advice I had a long time ago. When you find yourself in a hole, the first thing to do is to stop digging. I have nothing.
All right. City Manager reports.
We have a couple of presentations this morning. First of all, we have Maureen Hefelman, who's here, and she's the General Manager of the Myriad Gardens Foundation, to talk to us about some of the activities and things they've been doing at Myriad Gardens, and she's assisted by Susan Prudhoe this morning.
Good morning. Well, I started my job here at the Director of the Myriad Gardens last week of September, so I've been here a little over five months and really enjoying it, and I took the job because I just think it's a really exciting project that a botanical garden can serve both as a garden and really also a city park space and part of this, all of the urban renewal efforts that is undertaking right now. So it's a neat project to be associated with, and I just wanted to run you through some pictures of the site and tell you a little bit about what we're doing there, what we plan to do. So this first is an illustrated picture of the gardens, and it's basically separated into four quadrants. And the whole new garden has been designed by James Burnett, a truly world-class landscape architect, and this is meant to be a, a urban oasis in the city. So it's got really something for everyone, and I'm delighted. I live downtown and I come down on the weekends all the time, and it's really full of people. So it's really, even in this very early stage in the winter months, I think it's really fulfilling what it, the vision was for it to be, is a very vibrant center, a green oasis, an activity center, something for everyone, a real community gathering spot. And the way it's been designed, it's designed for families up to huge events, and I have a picture of opening night that was staged there on New Year's Eve this, this year. The grounds, I didn't see the before of the garden, but it has been completely razed and renovated. I'm sure most of you have been there, but it's really quite a beautiful spot. This area is the Minder's Garden, and it's devoted to native plants of Oklahoma, so it gives visitors a great education on native plants, a sense of place. We'll be adding more educational signage interpretation as we develop things there, but it's a very lovely tranquil, tranquil spot, great for people at their lunch hour and all times of the day. Lots of water has been incorporated into the new design. This is the lake that's been renovated, and we plan to use the lake a lot for programs to bring people down there. For example, this summer, I am working to get remote-controlled sailboats so families can come down and do that on the weekends or perhaps on the weekdays too. So you can imagine how fun and vibrant and picturesque that's going to be this summer, and lots of other activities as well. This is another shot of the lake, and one of the things we're working closely with the city on is to finalize all of the plantings, all of the last miscellaneous punch list items to fully complete the infrastructure and all of the planting. So this month and into early April, we'll be completing all those plantings, and so it's just going to be filled up with plants, and in a year or two, it will really reach its peak of where we want the gardens to be. So aesthetically, it'll be much more beautiful starting this year and the coming years. This is another shot of the gardens. You can see all the renovations. This is a shot looking from our new restaurant, which you'll see in just a minute, and this is looking into a waterfall feature, and as you see the next slide, you can see the really wonderful craftsmanship that went into the new design of the garden. So I think it's, it's a very timeless quality, and I think this design is not at all dated going into the future. It really is one that's going to serve the city well for many, many years. Another close-up of the waterfall feature and the planting surrounding it. And we've noticed that the, the garden is attracting all kinds of people, walkers, bikers, and I really see it as, as a hub for the downtown, for people to use the site. Either they're, they're coming specifically for it, they discover it and go somewhere else, and as the Coors Shore is started and completed and the bike trails, I think that our site will be a wonderful hub for people to start their walking tours or bike trips around the city. So that will continue to add, bring, something to bring people downtown and more activity when they are downtown. And this is a shot of our restaurant. It's a beautiful building. It's got a 180-degree glass view of the gardens. This is the interior. We are actively looking for an operator. We're really trying to find just the right operator, so we have someone who can offer really quality food, but they need to be flexible, so we might be serving kids. At one point, we might be having a fancy wedding reception one evening. We might be serving something for a thunder game. There might be a school group coming in, so we're trying to find just the right operator to make it successful. But in the meantime, we've been renting it out a lot. We've been also using it complimentary to some nonprofit groups to hold events there, so it's really becoming well-received by the community. And rental income too is a part of how we're going to make revenue so we can maintain the park to the highest standards in all of our programs. These are some photos of the grand opening, October 15th, which was terrific. Devin helped sponsor this event, which really formally opened the gardens to the community, and we had lots of events going on. The building at the top is an outdoor pavilion, which can serve for a lot of education programs, just an informal place for people to have lunch or gather, and we can have educational programs there as well. The lower shot is a farmer's market that was there, so as we really get into more planning activities, we hope to do more things like that there year-round. This is the plaza, which is just adjacent to the restaurant, and this is a beautiful spot in the summer. It has a water feature in this area that you see, and then in the winter, just this past winter, it was an ice skating rink, and it was just beautiful. And we had close to 30,000 people this year, so it was very successful. We hope to expand the rink by about 20% next year because it was so successful, and we think we can open up a little bit earlier, so we hope to be open about mid-November through the first week of February. And again, it's a great activity to bring people downtown and just add that sense of vibrancy, especially over the holidays. And this is a picture looking at our grand lawn, our great lawn, and the band shell, and this has been used quite a lot now since we've opened. We've had concerts there and events, and it works really well for that. And a lot of these things, we're delighted is that outside groups are wanting to come in and use it, and they're having free concerts or free events, so it really adds an element that families can come down and enjoy something at no cost. So it really fulfills that sense of a community gathering spot. And this is great. You can unleash yourself, you can unleash your dogs, so especially on the weekends, we've just had all kinds of people bringing their dogs to have a chance to run around and play, so that's been very popular, and it's great for downtown residents, they have a place to do this. And we have a interactive water feature, so in the summer, this is going to be just, I think, super popular with families, and the fountain, I don't know anything like it that I've seen around the country. It's a water feature which sequences through different stages of water play. So there's a thunderstorm, there's mist, there's water that comes up from the ground. It's, it's quite an attraction. It's fun to watch, attracts all kinds of creatures, and it's a wonderful amenity for the city.
If you haven't been there to watch kids, I mean, you just sit there, you know, the kids are just running in and out of that thing, and they're just having the best time. When this was proposed, I will have to say, I may have been a bit of a skeptic that maybe this was, I maybe didn't really even understand what it was, but boy, it's been just an incredible thing.
Yeah, you have to come and see it. I mean, I think projects like this, you know, a lot of money has been spent on this, I realize, but, you know, talk about raising the quality of life in a city. I mean, even if you don't go into the fountain, if you're there watching it, it just brings joy, and to me, I, the project is such a gift to the city, that this space with all its components and is open up to the city, and it's beautiful, and it's a great place for a diverse audience to interact. I mean, I don't, there's not a lot of places in cities where you're going to have a whole mix of people, and so it's a great place, it serves that function as well. So I, I just think that, you know, you all must be thrilled with this in the city now, and we feel a lot of responsibility, the staff, to really bring it up to its potential and, and make it one of the finest public garden parks in the country. And we have a children's garden, which is wonderful. It's very popular. There's a playground area, which is, is full of families, and then there's a garden area, and there's play elements, and we're just going to be enhancing this more and more as we go. So lots of interesting theme plantings and colorful gardens and activities and free programs throughout the year. And this space also is really designed for art and culture as well, so in addition to just a beautiful urban oasis, places for play, we can layer into it art, art shows. We have two outdoor sculpture shows scheduled this summer, performances of all kind. The water stage has been renovated and more seating has been added. So I see it really as a very lively cultural center as well as a park and public garden space.
Maureen, excuse me, could we go back to that previous slide? I know it's designed for art and culture, but I'd like to suggest we have a city council meeting there, maybe to kick off the arts festival, because I think it would accommodate a meeting like ours. I know that's difficult on the staff to change locations, but I think it'd be a great way to give greater exposure to the garden.
We would love to host that. It would be our pleasure. We'd love to do that. And then the Crystal Bridge, again, an icon for the city. I'm showing this to, to let you know, or just to reiterate, that part of the funds spent on the project was to renovate the exterior, all of the siding on the Crystal Bridge, so now it's in excellent shape. I hope that we can do some more interior updating as we go, but the exterior has all been improved, which is terrific. The Crystal Bridge gets anywhere from about 65 to 95,000 people a year on average, and I think with new exhibits and changing themes in there, we can continue to increase that. And we get people from all over the country. This is the cloudwalk looking down into everything. And then I'm going to end the program here with the garden at night, because the garden takes on a whole new personality at night, and if you've ever been down for a thunder game or just walking around, it's quite spectacular and, and a lot of fun. The whole redesign has incorporated a lot of features, so you really feel safe there at night too. But the Crystal Bridge goes through a light show, LED lights, and it cycles through different colors, so again, it's very vivid and bright and, and fun to see at night. And this is the children's fountain. At night, it becomes even more spectacular with this amazing light scheme that they have, and it's, you can, you just have to come down and see it to appreciate it. And at night, the ice skating rink is open, and that brought in just thousands of people in the evening to the ice rink. And the band shell has lights also, so we can do some wonderful night concerts. And I'm ending with the shot of the opening night. So this was a scene there on New Year's Eve. We had well over 50,000 people, but it worked beautifully as the grand finale sight for the show where the crystal ball was raised and the fireworks went out, went up. So it's, it's just a great space for the city, and I really feel privileged to help lead the efforts to further have it grow and be beautiful and especially active with all, all kinds of programmings for a wide audience. So, thank you.
Yeah, Ed, how, you know, we're obviously building a $130 million park just south of you. What, what are your thoughts about, I mean, now that you've, now that you're up and running and you've hopefully learned some things about maintenance, about the different programming, what, what are your thoughts about programming the new Coors Shore Park? Are you working with that park's subcommittee on how the two might form a symbiosis, how you might best interface with each other?
Well, I think, I, I'm not working on it now. I haven't been asked to do that. I'd be happy to, but I think they're, they're definitely extremely complimentary, and I don't know a lot about that project, and I don't know what's tentatively planned other than that it's a park, but I think that there could definitely be a lot of complimentary planning, but I really don't know that much to, to speak about it, what's planned for it. I, I, I think that it could probably be a more passive park than what we have, since ours is very heavily programmed, and links for biking trails and maybe more... programmed, and links for biking trails and maybe more athletic space. I think there's some ways to cooperate.
I guess that's what I'm getting at, is I just -- it really hasn't been programmed yet, so we don't know. I mean, we're developing it, but the more interaction between the two, so they're not just kind of working in back --
Oh, absolutely.
-- isolated from each other.
Yeah. I mean, I -- once I would learn more about it, or be part of a team helping to plan it, I mean, I think there could be lots of ideas of what that could hold that we don't have. So, you know, we're not being redundant, but I think there -- I mean, everything from a children's garden, a growing garden, a community vegetable garden, you know, I personally would love to see something like that take place there. We don't have the space for it, but maybe that does in the planning stages.
What have you learned in terms of electricity costs? Has it been more, less, or...?
Well, they've been more. I mean, the city is paying the utilities for the project. I don't really know. Maybe Susan might know off the top of her head, comparing our current cost to before it was redesigned. I don't know. I'm sure the costs are a little bit higher. I don't know what that percentage is. Do you, Susan?
We've not been to a full operating year, so we don't have that estimate.
Okay.
Okay.
Gary?
Well, the -- she mentioned a couple of things that the Arts Council puts on there. The festival, of course. And last year, we were just half the gardens, so we're really looking forward to what we're going to be able to do with the full gardens. And the opening night crowd, the Arts Council were just blown away with the acceptance of the people moving from where we'd been for years down to the gardens. And I think that's going to be something that's going to continue on. We are putting -- the Arts Council has the program. Hopefully, everybody's aware of it. The lunchtime, during the week lunchtime, art moves that we're putting around all over downtown. And we're doing some of those in the gardens, in the grand lawn, the band shell, and everything from performing arts to painting, sculptures, whatever it may be. And you have found that the people really like getting into the park. It's an amazing place to be, as long as the weather holds out for you. But, it's going to be, I think it'll just keep growing as we go through the years, and people get used to watch down there.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much. Any other city manager reports?
We do. We'd like to have Jane Abraham come and talk to us a little bit about the Centennial Land Run Monument.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Jane Abraham in the City Manager's Office. And I will go through this quickly. Just wanted to kind of give a status update of the Centennial Land Run Monument. We've got several statues that are going to be installed this year. So, just kind of give a brief overview of kind of where we are to date, and kind of what's coming up, and the spaces that are going to be filled in here shortly. Should I say shortly? Some shortly, and some within the next few years. As you all are familiar with the project, this has been going on for many years. It was jointly funded with federal, state, and city funds. It was part of the centennial celebration in terms of when it was kicked off and when the project was started. As of right now, 29 of the 38 sculptures have been completed, and 27 of those have been installed. We've got one horse and rider that is at the foundry and is now out for bid for installation. So, that will be coming in here probably in the next four to six weeks. So, just to talk about the different sculptures that are in production, there's always several pieces that are in various stages of production. There's four basic stages that we -- that are for each piece. There's -- they go through a foam stage, enlargement mold, and then they go to the foundry, and then they're final and accepted. And that's when they come to council for acceptance. And we install them then after that time. So, this is the piece that will be coming in here shortly. This is Horse and Rider, number 22. And that's kind of what it looks like from the side. And this placement of this piece, it will be right -- if you look at that grouping of the -- I don't have a pointer, but if you look at the grouping of the wagon, and then there's a horse and rider right beside it, it's going to be right beside that one there, to the north or the left of that grouping. And then, I handed out maps of the monument site, so you could see all of the statues that have been installed, as well as those that are currently in production, and then the statues that were deferred. When the project first started, there were going to be 45 sculptures, but with funding issues that we've had over the years, that was changed to be 38. But, if you look at the pieces, and if -- I don't know if you all have been out there recently. It looks -- it looks great. I mean, you really -- I don't think it'll be very noticeable. This picture shows the -- this is looking from the west -- on the west side of the canal. There will be the horse that is -- there's a draft horse that's completed and waiting at the foundry. And then, there's a buggy that's coming in, and that's going to be the last large piece coming in. And it'll look like it's, from this perspective, it'll look like it's between those two horse and riders. And that's looking further, I guess, up the line. And then, this is the front of that grouping. This just shows that you can see, as Meg was talking about, with the new I-40 alignment, it's really rather close to the sculptures now. You can -- the I-40 is just right behind the park area where the sculptures are. And this shows, just from another perspective, where the buggy and the draft horse will be coming in, as well as two horses -- horse and riders that are going to be coming up out of the water that are also in production. And this shows a space where there will be two horse and riders in this space. One is falling down, the other one is upright. And it also -- this also shows the perspective in terms of being able to see the finish line tower and the river from the location of the Land Run Monument. This is where the new turning basin will be coming in, that will connect the river and the canal area that will go underneath I-40. And this is interesting to me. Everybody's been talking about the grade separation for years and years between the two. And this -- you can get a sense of what that looks like. And that's it. So, we can see with our new skyline downtown and the monument, it looks really...
So, to take away on this is there's 38 funded pieces. We've got 27 installed, so it's just a little over two-thirds at this point in time. Two more are completed that haven't been installed left. That will leave nine. Of those nine, five are in some type of production mode at this point in time, which leaves four more that will be sculpted and completed over the next couple of years. The sculpting, we anticipate, will be completed in '13, and the final production, we anticipate, will be done in '14. So, a couple of years to do this. And again, we've got about a little over two-thirds of it in, and the other one third will be installed over the next couple of years.
I was down there, Jane, over the holidays when my dad was in town, and it's just fabulous. I really hadn't been for a long time. And the magnitude of the project is really wonderful. And once we get the connection, so it should be able to cross through, I think it will be just an addition, a tremendous draw for folks.
And the canal extension should be bid out in the next -- we're finalizing the design. That should be bid out in the next couple of months.
If I was going to tell a visitor to Oklahoma City where to park to see this from the best advantage point, what directions would I give them?
So, if I was to tell a visitor to Oklahoma City to go look at this monument, series of monuments, what would be the best place? What directions would I give them to find the best place to park, to have the best view, best -- be able to see the thing? Very easy. You go into the parking lot of Bass Pro, and you go underneath the old I-40, into the parking lot to the south of there. And there's plenty of places to park and great access into the...
So, you go through the Pro Bass parking lot?
Yes, sir.
I've done that before, but is that the best place?
Well, you know, that or being on the canal boats is a great vantage point from going down. You don't see it all at that point in time, but it's the most dramatic is going on the canal boats, as you see it.
Now, David, are there picnic tables around this area to...?
There are not.
Is it...?
There are benches. There are benches along kind of the edge where the parking lot is, and some places to sit.
Best vantage point.
For a picnic?
Yeah.
That hasn't been the approach?
Well, people are going to start thinking, "All I would do is sit around and eat," when I just bring up the idea of benches and picnic tables. But, I just think it would really be a great place to have a picnic at.
You can bring a blanket, David.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments or questions for Jane? Thanks for your oversight on this.
Thank you.
All right. Any other city manager reports?
No, the city sales staff report. Sales staff were good in February. And if you have to answer any questions you may have.
All right. We have William Caffey here to speak. All right. We will need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name's William R. Caffey. I live at 732 Northeast 15th, 7304. I'm in Ward 7. I've never come before the council before, and it's a very serious matter that I come before the court, before not the court, but the council. I would like to make a personal privilege, since I had to sit here since about 8:00, I would suggest when you have two or three three-minute speakers, that you would let them have the courtesy to go first. I'm sorry I had to impose my coughing on you for three hours, but I'll tell you what. In courtrooms across the state, the judge allows the guest or the out-of-town lawyer to go first. And since I'm a citizen here, I don't look at myself as a privilege to be here. I look at myself as your boss, because I get to vote for you and campaign for you. So, that's that comment. And one other comment, just watching this session, I never even heard this thing about the scalping. One group that was never considered, we talked about the tickets and blah, 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 and the scalpers. How about the people, the citizens of Oklahoma City? Who's representing us? We went really hard. We -- I campaigned for the MAPS program. I guess one of the great things we have, we have the Thunder because of the MAPS. Hundreds of millions of dollars of tax money. And you allow the Thunder, the Thunder gets to sell all the concerts and everything else. They're in charge of everything. Scalpers are no more than hitchhikers. They're like legal pirates. I had to pay -- I paid $200 a ticket for the Paul McCartney concert in 2002. I didn't mind. Bought it from the general manager at Bob Smickless. He's a really fun guy. He gave me the exact what he had to pay for him. Nobody minds paying a little premium for something. But, this idea that they -- that the scalpers come out and just soak up all the tickets, it makes the -- it makes the taxi cab driver that has three kids can never go to a thunder game, because he can never have the season tickets. It's an excellent bill for what it does, but it needs to go further. With technology, you could take care of it. Why don't you have an open hearing sometime, have Thunder fans, and have people come and testify? A Jokic Diggly owner, friend of mine, and Mike Holdrup at OSU, tell you how they handle it. Having these pirates come in here and say it's free market, it's black market's what it is. It's disgusting. Thank God Chief City was here to kind of put a little squelch on that. You might consider that next week, consider the public who paid for this. Scalpers don't pay for any police protection. They don't pay for any -- anything. Bush Springs teams of the world want their fans to come see their concerts. I'm taking all my time. I'm here for a very serious matter. A week ago, I was out walking, as I do every morning, early. I was in Ward 2. I walked from my house all the way up to Jimmy's Egg on 50th and Military. And Oklahoma City, City of Oklahoma City sanitation truck, garbage truck, almost ran me over at Northwest 50th and Military. What the truck was doing was driving over 20 miles an hour, maybe 25 miles an hour, and ran the stop sign. It was about a little after 6:00 in the morning. It was dark. They obviously didn't think anybody was there, didn't see me. But, I had a fluorescent orange OSU hat that David Greenwell sees most mornings at a health club. But, what I'm saying is, I screamed some things that you wouldn't want me to repeat here. They just came and did a left -- well, they did a right turn to go. I was so angered that I walked onto Jimmy's Egg and dialed 911. I had a rude dispatch receiver. She says, "Well, you weren't hurt, were you?" I'm like, "Lady, I wasn't calling in an injury. I was calling in a crime," which is the City of Oklahoma City that I happen to love. Had that truck run me over and killed me, although I'd be sad to be dead, probably my heirs would enjoy the lawsuit. That would entail a huge lawsuit, complete violation of law. That's why we have stop signs. They didn't think anybody was there, but they didn't know. They wouldn't have meant to murder me. I understand that. So, I called 911, got the rude dispatcher that said, "Well, what do you want to report? You're not hurt?" "No, I'm reporting a crime, ma'am." "Do you really want someone to come out here?" "Yes." "Will you still stay at Jimmy's Egg?" "Yes." Nobody came for an hour. I have to work for a living, so I waited an hour and left. I told the -- there's a lot of business that goes on at Jimmy's Egg before hours. The waitress said, "Well, he waited an hour." They know me. So, I took several more hours out of my day, and I came down to City Hall, came up to see City Manager Couch or Mayor Cornet. I've met Mayor Cornet before, just reporting. It was difficult to even -- well, it was difficult to get to the building. I told the construction people, "Hadn't anybody ever told you about building a bridge so you can come from the courthouse over here? Citizens have to spend 15 minutes and crawl over stuff to get to redress their grievances." I'm redressing my grievances right now. The elderly lady that answers the desk out here, she ignored me. She was on the phone chatting with somebody. She said it was business, but she sat there and chatted. I'm a businessman. I had offices. I'd never let my receptionist talk that long with someone standing right in front of him, so maybe some retooling. But, she got angry. That's the one thing I like, that this older lady got angry. But, she ran and got the one competent person that the city interjected in my life that day. And that was former Chief Barry. He came out, because he was all worried that somebody was causing a scene out here. I wasn't causing any scene. I was very calm. I was very angry. Mayor Barry took down all the information, exactly what happened. And he was very apologetic about the police officers taking more than an hour to answer a call that was non-emergency. I asked him at Jimmy's Egg this morning. They said, "Well, they wanted to make sure no one was hurt." They knew no one was hurt. If it was a hit and run, that city cop would have been there in 10 minutes. They knew what it was. They didn't want to answer the call. So, Mayor Barry took everything down. I mean, Mayor Barry, former Chief Barry, assistant. He took it down and said, "I'll have someone come to your house. How's that, citizen?" I said, "That's wonderful. What time would you like me to come? What time would you like a police officer to come to your house?" I said, "How about 5:00 in the morning?" "Really?" "No, I'm up earlier than that. I'll stay around." And I said, "How about 5:30?" He goes, "Okay, 5:30 in the morning. Here's your phone number." No one showed. No one showed. Finally, I had to leave to go to work about 7:00. But, I did get a -- someone did come by with this card. I don't have any idea what time. It just said, "Please call. It's Eric Huff. He's a sergeant with the Spring Lake Division." I called him when I got home that evening. I've had no response. I've had a very, very disappointing experience with my city government. But, I'll tell you exactly why I'm here. When I was 14 years old, and I was visiting the state of Alabama, where my brothers went to college at Auburn, my oldest brother, Don, got married there. His young bride told me the story that happened the summer before. She said a little eight-year-old girl, everybody loved in Bayman, Alabama, was standing out on the road, waiting for the school bus to come. Someone didn't see her. It was dark. Hit her, killed her. And the whole town went to that funeral. Said she went to that funeral. And she said she's never seen such weeping, where the children's choir stood up saying, "Jesus loves me." Jesus does love us all. But, you know what? The City of Oklahoma City would be awfully sad, and those garbage truck drivers would be awful sad, if they hit a little child waiting out for the school bus. This is a very timely... is a very timely comment by me. Sunday marks the daylight savings time. And so, all our little children that wait for school buses are going to be standing there in the dark. I would hate to have one funeral that the mayor or someone would have to go to, because a garbage truck was in a hurry to get home. I mentioned this at the courthouse. This was a, oh yeah, those garbage workers, they're always in a hurry to get home. They're on their way home, so they, they kind of cut corners. I don't know what corners you accept, Mr. Shadid, or Shadid in your ward. If that happened to your ward, there's kids that go to Westminster, private schools, there's public schools that stand out on the bus, and they're all going to be out in the dark next Monday. I haven't even got to fill out a police report. They made me dial 911. I would like to have gone down to the police station and just fill it out. I haven't wasted my time, but I've spent about six or seven hours of my own time trying to deliver this message to you. And this isn't just the rantings or the anger of a citizen. I'm putting you all on notice. Every single one of you are on notice, that if that little child gets killed in the dark, you were warned and did nothing. Those people should be fired, manager. They shouldn't be told to drive better. When you run a stop sign at 25 miles an hour, you're not worthy to wear the uniform that that young man, that Mayor Cornet congratulated today. We should have a higher standard. And for God's sake, when somebody reports a crime, don't make them spend six or seven hours to make a point. Almost anyone else would have just have thrown in the towel. But I wanted to come here and tell you that. I hope we don't have to have any funerals for some children or anyone else, because of negligence by the City of Oklahoma City. But if we do, the video of this comments by me will be made public to that child's family and their lawyers. So, the idea of, well, I didn't know anything about it. If I was the Ward 2 Councilman, I'd be on it tomorrow.
Wait, I think we get it. Thanks. You're starting to repeat yourself. Thanks very much for coming down.
I appreciate, appreciate.
Sarge, I know you signed up to speak today. You know, we don't allow elected leaders to speak during Citizens to be Heard.
I'm elected leader, and you signed up to allow me?
Well, Sarge, if you want to come up and discuss why you can't speak, you can. But otherwise, we have executive session and we'll go in.
I can speak on one day?
If you'd like, if you'd like for a full explanation on why we can't allow you to speak before council as an announced candidate for public office, I'd be glad to, to go over that with you.
I can speak on one day?
But otherwise, we're going to have to go to executive session.
Other words, I'm working for public office. How can you speak?
We have executive session and we'll be back.